February 12, 2019 minutes.
So, second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion seeing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, passes 400. Uh, public participation, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Information reports, our student representative wasn't able to join us tonight, so look forward to hearing from her next month. Subcommittee reports, oh, and I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy's going to be a few minutes late, God bless you, the prior commitment right now. Subcommittee reports, is there anyone?
Um, I just had an announcement, um, many of you probably already know, uh, that the Burlington Public Library does Burlington Reads every year, and they suggest a book or two that everyone can read and discuss, and this year, um, they are doing Burlington Reads in March, and they are encouraging people to read the book, The Hate You Give by Angie Thomas, and a three-part graphic novel called March, written by John Lewis about John Lewis and his life, and including some support from illustrators. Both books I've read, and are both really, really valuable and interesting books. The library's having discussions on Motown and civil rights, civil rights, uh, of different conversations, the movie of The Hate You Give, and also a book discussion on both of those books separately, and I would just encourage people to read the books, even if you can't make it to any of the events, uh, but also to check out the library website, you can get more information about that, too. I believe that the high school library has these flyers as well, and hopefully, um, people will be sharing their thoughts on these books.
Thank you. Ways and Means. Anything, we'll discuss it a little bit.
Again, Madam Chair, we did have a subcommittee meeting, um, last night, so, um, so we started, uh, uh, dissecting the, uh, the budget document, so.
Great, thank you. Next, we have the Instruction Technology Extended Learning Initiative.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to, I'll invite up, uh, Joe Adabato, Joe, you have a team with you, and Sean Hart. This is a, uh, really a teacher-led effort, um, to look at, um, some possibilities for, uh, time and learning. I wanted to give them an opportunity to present to the school committee, because I think it represents a lot of work across lots of levels and lots of teachers, and I think they certainly want to share that work. This conversation is about, um, what school could possibly look like, again, depending on, um, weather or a bunch of other possibilities. The way this stands now at the state level is the Department of Elementary and Second Area, it's just becoming more common, so the department is sort of stepping in and needing to do some approvals. I just wanted to, um, basically allow the group to give the school committee an update. Again, in my thinking, this is not for this year, this should be something that we would sort of be exposed to, think about, and, um, if it's something that we want to consider, it would be for next year, so this is sort of my initial thinking, but I didn't want, I think we need to do this work, um, thoughtfully ahead of time, I want to thank everyone for the time that you've contributed. Again, we're getting close to March, but if last year's anything like this year, I shouldn't say anything, so I'm not going to say anything, because March was a difficult month for us, um, last year, but again, I think, um, this type of work is becoming more common. I really appreciate that this was teacher-created, um, and I'm excited to see some of the specifics, so Joe and Sean, I think you guys did some of the coordinating, so thank you.
No, thank you, uh, thank you for having us tonight. First, I just wanted to, um, thank all the teachers here for the time and effort they put into this process. I'd just like to quickly have them come up before they all run away. If they could, uh, just come up quickly, introduce yourselves.
And if you could also include what school you are at, that would be great.
I'm Christina Decroche, and I teach Spanish here at the high school. I'm not going to present about my lesson, but I just want to say I just took 29 kids to Spain for the last two weeks, and distance learning was alive and well every day, so.
Did 29 come back, I just?
I'm Emily Bilarzick, I teach English at the high school.
Kim Lynch, I teach fifth grade at Francis Wyman.
Barbara Sturdivan, I teach sixth grade at Marshall Simons.
Kelly Stromsky, I teach, uh, reading at the middle school.
I'm Christine Concepcion, I'm the, um, social worker for the high school.
I'm Gloria Watasik, I'm a guidance counselor at VHS as well.
I'm Tara Holshaw, I teach fourth grade at Memorial.
So, we were just going to quickly go through a couple of slides, and then give the teachers here an opportunity to, uh, actually show you what distance learning, um, is all about. So, when we talk about distance learning, the state actually has provided a definition of what distance learning is. Just so the committee knows, the state has, um, developed a committee that, uh, started meeting in September to look at distance learning, and, um, they invited several communities to be part of that process, uh, in terms of explaining how districts have, you know, worked with distance learning in their particular districts, and so Burlington is at the table with these other communities, as the state is actually in the process of developing, uh, some guidelines around distance learning. So, again, this is just the state's definition. Just kind of how this all came to be, we wanted to quickly, um, talk a little bit about that. So, the committee mission and our, really our process, we really believe that, um, the highest form of learning takes place in the classroom with a qualified teacher, support staff, or specialist. We also acknowledge as a committee that days made up at the end of the school calendar are not the same quality as those that are offered, that, that could be offered with distance learning opportunities. Again, the committee really feels that way, the days in June are not as effective. And our mission was really to discuss, develop a process to deliver curriculum in an organized manner with a start and end date. And you'll hear more about this from the teachers, but we want the, the teaching and the, the learning and the curriculum that's being communicated to be timely, relevant, uh, quality learning experiences, excuse me. And so essentially, and Sean, jump in.
You are flying right now, you are killing.
Try to move quick, why don't you talk about the?
So, just going down to the bottom bullet, we just wanted to impress upon the committee that, again, we went through multiple layers in trying to get the most amount of input we could from all the stakeholders. We sent out, we, we met in, in early August as, as a small group to have a conversation about where we wanted this to go, what did we want this to look like, what did we think it could look like? Uh, we opened it up to the entire staff and asked anybody who wanted to be part of it to, to come on board and, and kind of take a little journey with us, if you will. Uh, we had two full committees, and, and the points of the committees in having two were, we wanted one to help start to build, and we wanted the second one to do nothing more than tear us down. We wanted to see what was wrong, we wanted to see what the input was, we wanted to see what the bad news was, we wanted to see the, the danger around every corner, if you will, and, and the second committee came in and, and said, what about this, and what about this? And then what we were able to do is we were able to send it out to the entire staff and say, this is what we've come up with, we know it's not the be-all, end-all, but what it is, is a great jump-off point, and the staff was tremendous in getting back to us with feedback, specific point, this thing, oh, we didn't like this, oh, this was great, but we didn't like this. And so it gave us an opportunity to come back and actually rework the documents several times to get it to be where we are today at this particular moment.
And I believe you all should have a, a hard copy of that plan. And then again, real quickly, and then Dennis, you can come up. So, we, again, we, one of the things that we did is we looked at local communities, um, and particularly, we, we took a look at what Wakefield High School's doing, what Westford's doing, uh, and, and part of the process, uh, the committee actually met with, uh, administration at both those particular schools to talk about distance learning and how they were in their particular communities. And again, that, that played into the whole feedback piece, so we really feel like the committee, um, reached out and, and really tried to figure out pros and cons of the plan as, as we kind of developed it, so.
It was, and the other part of it, too, was that, meeting with superintendents from those other districts, they sat down and actually said, this is your pitfall, this is what you need to get over, this is what killed us, this is what hurt us in this particular instance, and these are the benefits that we've reaped from it. So, it was great being able to see the fruits of other people's labors, and, and one of the big things that we encountered on several points was, everybody thanked us for some initial work that had been done in the district already, which was great.
So, I'm Dennis Plon, Director of Tech Integration, I, I get to introduce the teachers, which is the best part of this. Really, the, the two things I really wanted to highlight is, the technology that we have in place now for our students and teachers allowed this to happen seamlessly, it's something that's already being done on a regular basis in almost every classroom in the district, and it's the use of two platforms, Seesaw, which is a, a, a digital platform, digital workflow platform, that's mostly used K to six for all our students, all students and teachers in those grades have access to it, and Google Classroom, which is a LMS workflow option for students and teachers, and again, the whole district has access to this, but mostly used in middle school and high school. These teachers are going to highlight some of the ways they're already using it, using those tools on a daily basis, so the idea of distance learning is not something new or outside of what's already happening, and I really want to focus on that. The tools that our teachers are using are already in place for this to happen, uh, on a regular basis if it was put in place. So, I'll introduce, I think Kim is going to start, Kim Lynch is going to start, and she's going to show you a little bit about using Seesaw with students, and actually what it looks like for a student, so if they were at home, they would go through this process of accessing, uh, a teacher assignment at home on a distance learning day.
So, first of all, I want to say I feel very lucky to be here, this is the first time I've ever come and talked to you on my own behalf. I know I've been here in the past for other things, but never for myself, uh, so it's really cool. And I also want to say that this is a compilation of many different teachers who all shared different products that they are, like we said already, using in their classrooms already with the students in their iPad, on their iPads, I apologize. So, right now, we are looking at this as if we are a student, and this is what they will see when they open up Seesaw, and this would be their activity. What you will notice is the next one looks very similar, it is just slightly different in that this one is differentiated for a student who might be a little bit more of a struggler, who would need labels to move around, as opposed to the next slide where they would actually be doing the, the word finding themselves, the word retrieval. So, they would go right in, and of course, it's not doing anything, there we go, sorry about that. So, it, the instructions say, the model was taken from a children's book, as the editor, review this model and approve the model to include the following, and it's just about dragging and dropping the labels to where they would need to be. This is actually a lesson that Sean Musselman put at the end of our Earth and the Solar System unit, and all I did was take it and I put it here into Seesaw. So, again, something we would do in the classroom, and I actually did do it just like this in the classroom with my students. It was really nice to be able to differentiate it, and they all felt like they were, they were doing the exact same thing, so it was really nice. So, you go right into the activity, and you can drag and drop the labels, and of course, I can't grab them now for some reason. Well, for the moment, let's just say I'm going to do the year, and this would be the Earth going around the sun in a year. The day, we would show by going around in a circle around the day, and so on and so forth. The second one, again, it's the same assignment, just without the labels. This has been done, all of the teaching has occurred at this point, and they're just showing what they know. And then, I have another one for exploration, where they would, if we were in the process of doing the explorers, I wound up choosing, I think, Christopher Columbus, Ferdinand Magellan, and John Cabot, and they would simply trace the routes around the world, this would be if we were actually in the unit at that time on a day off. And I actually found this lesson almost exactly as is just a teacher had shared from somewhere else. And I grabbed it, I changed a few of the, the actual explorers, Christopher Columbus was there and two others that we don't study. So, I changed it to ones we know already, and let me show you a couple of different ones as well. So, a listing of nouns and verbs, there's a poem there, and they can find the nouns and verbs and put them into a two-column note, which the entire school district uses, and then there's actually a point at the end where they read the poem to you, and they can record it, and then the teacher can hear it whenever they go back to read it. Mathematics, this is just a place value chart, I think actually it was a second grade, or maybe a third grade teacher that shared this one. They could go in, even or odd, different numbers in different place values, another one, where on the map, I am poem. There are just so many great things, and you can find so many of them out there on the web, and our teachers are using them in the school building almost on a daily basis already. So, I don't want to use up all your time, I'm going to introduce Barbara Sturdivan from the middle school.
As I said, I'm Barbara Sturdivan, and I teach sixth grade, Social Studies at Marshall Simons. Um, and we do use Seesaw, but something that we use, um, with more frequency is Google Classroom, both in the classroom and at home, um, if you have students past or present, they might be familiar with Google Classroom. So, what I did was I actually made a, excuse me, sample Classroom, and, um, invited Kim to join it so she could see what it looked like, what it would look like from a student perspective. Technical difficulties. So, one thing that I would like to emphasize with Google Classroom, as Kim just did with Seesaw, my students use this almost every single day, there is nothing new, they don't need to learn how to use it, they know what to do, they've got this down. And additionally, I did take a couple of screenshots, I reached out to a student last minute, I said, can you take a screenshot of your classroom to see how many students, or how many different teachers in different classes are using it? And, um, a few of them replied very graciously, so as soon as it comes up, um, I can show you that this is not going to be unique for me on, at the middle school. Off the top of my head, I know that health teachers, music teachers, most core curriculum teachers, foreign language teachers, they are all using Google Classroom as a way to access their assignments. So, the assignment that I put together is a unit that I just finished, um, on the study of Africa. So, again, very authentic, and very much what they would have been studying that day. And it was a simple worksheet that I put on Classroom, and as Kim said, I actually made, I, I didn't make two versions, I sent a copy of it to, um, the special education teacher on my team, and she made some accommodations, highlighting different words, giving a couple of definitions, filling in a few, and also saying, choose five, instead of doing all of them. And the best part with Google Classroom is that when you log on, as a teacher, I can select who gets which type of assignment. The students have no idea, as far as they are concerned, everybody is getting the same thing they do not know. But at home, they are seeing it, so here we go. So, this is a couple of screenshots of how much Classroom is used at the middle school. So, this is a students' one, um, many different classes that they are already familiar with. And if I was to upload to Classroom, this is what I would see as a teacher, that I have two different assignments, one of them called Version One, one of them called Version Two. Students do not know that, though, because this is what they see. The only thing they see is Barbara Sturdivan posted a new assignment, Africa, Economy worksheet. They would tap on it, be able to open it up, and it would give the instructions right on it with what they need to do. They would have no idea who was getting which one, so this is Version One. Version Two would have on it, choose two, choose three, and I do have them, they're just not up here right now. They would have some of the answers filled in, but this is exactly what we would be doing in class, exports of various regions of Africa, looking at the book to get information, and then drawing conclusions as part of our curriculum. So, again, what we use, very authentic, and they all know what to do with this, because it's what we're learning, and it's how they access it on a regular basis. Thank you.
Um, so I'm Emily Bilarzick, I teach English at the high school, and, um, like at the elementary school and middle school, we are already integrating technology into our classrooms all the time. Um, we all use Google Classroom already for homework assignments, a lot of classwork. When teachers are absent, it's fairly universally, we're posting assignments on Classroom, so students are used to getting the instruction, go to Classroom, see what's there, um, they're very familiar with it, this wouldn't be anything new for them at all. So, um, I just wanted to show you quickly two assignments that I've used this, this year that, um, were fairly independent assignments that could have been used on snow days, so. So, this is an assignment that I gave to my freshman classes, um, we were working on narrative writing, so I assigned this after we'd already focused on what narrative writing is, we'd already practiced it in class, and then they were adding a scene to a short story that they'd read. So, um, this has instructions I included on here, tips for narrative writing, that would be things that they would all know, but it's there for them again, and then, um, in the same document, I have a, a rubric and example, right? So, that makes it fairly independent for them to, um, be able to see what's expected of them. Uh, the other assignment that I wanted to show you, uh, was actually summer work for my AP Literature students. So, um, they, part of their summer assignment was discussion board posts. So, they'd read some books, so this would be, um, something that students would do, like after, um, after a reading assignment that we'd done in class, and they were finding an article or video about a real-world issue or event that connected to one of the things they were reading in class. What's nice about this is since students would have a two-week, two-week window to complete the assignment, this is something that we're not going to be waiting for to, like, move on with class, right? It's not, like, specific to chapter nine, um, but rather kind of an extension where they're taking what we're doing in class and adding something on to it. So, they did discussion board posts, um, and then replied to each other's posts, so that's something that I use with Google Classroom a lot, where students can post their own material, and then also go in and see what their classmates are writing, and respond to them, and have basically a, a virtual class discussion through Google Classroom. Also through this, it's really easy for me to post feedback for the class, so this was just a post that I put up after some students had replied to each other and some hadn't yet, um, I could just comment on, here's what I'm seeing, if you haven't posted yet, come, think about this, this is what I'm liking, right? So, it's really easy for me to give feedback through Google Classroom itself, um, which could also happen kind of in class during that window when they're completing the work.
So, as Joe, as Joe switches back to his presentation, um, one of the key points, I just want to say it again, for, our students already, these are things that they're doing on a regular basis, this isn't something extra, this isn't something that was created or would be created just on a canceled day. There should be something happening in the normal time of the school year to keep things going, and not lose track of days, and not fall off pace of what should be happening in the classroom, so that's really one key thing to it. The technology allows us to do it, but obviously, it's the instruction of the teachers that they're creating on a daily basis that's in place for this. And, so the technology just is enabling it to make it beyond the school day outside of the classroom. So, Joe's going to show a little bit about some options about how we got here, and then obviously, if you have questions, we can answer some questions.
So, again, really, again, thank you for your time, thank you again to the teachers. We, the committee did come up with some possible recommendations, again, this is not, we understand there's a process that needs to happen beyond this point, but, um, again, you all have the plan, we would encourage you to take a look at it. We're fine at this point now, sharing it with the community for others to look at it, teachers have had the opportunity to look at it as well. And again, this was kind of what the committee had thought of in terms of implementation from here. Ideally, if there was a way we could, um, somehow have a distance learning day, if we had zero canceled days, is there a way, you know, for us to maybe, as a district, have a, a trial day, and again, other districts have done this. Other, other couple of thoughts that came up were if there was, again, just in terms of the opportunity to try to implement this, if there was a canceled school day, maybe on the first day, implement a distance, uh, learning day, and then, at that point, we don't have to continue doing it, but I think just getting the feedback and the feel for it, um, would be an important piece. And then another option that had come up is, um, if there, uh, right now, I think the school year is ending on a Wednesday, and after two days, two canceled days, instead of pushing into the following week, we consider on that third, uh, canceled day to, again, implement a distance learning day. So, these are all potential options, and I know that, uh, the school committee, you need to do, do your due diligence, look at this plan, talk to community members about it, get feedback, so we, we understand that, you know, this may not come to fruition, but we would, um, hope that maybe next year, we could try to implement possibly a distance learning day as well. So, uh, we understand there's probably lots of questions, just, just so you know, in the packets that were shared with you, there are questions and answers, we would certainly encourage you to take a look at that. But at this point, you know, if you do have any questions, we can do our best to answer them.
I have some questions, unless you do.
So, you can start us.
Is Wilmington?
No. No, but Wakefield, we have friends in Wakefield who have done it.
Joe, my understanding is, um, uh, is the Department of Ed having to approve any plan that we submit? Or how, what's the approval process?
Right now, the, the DESI has left it up to the school boards.
Okay.
Uh, I, we do think, based on some of the meetings Patrick, Dennis, and I have attended with the state, that, uh, they are going to come out with some, some guidelines at some point. Uh, and I think this committee that's met at the state level is preparing, um, recommended guidelines to go to the commissioner.
Ms. Simon?
First, I want to thank you all, obviously, a lot of time and thought has gone into this, and it sounds like a really good thing for us to pursue, I, you know, whether we go full force or not. I was wondering, a couple of things, I, I was concerned, it seems obviously easier for older students and older teachers and assignments to work, and, um, I'm glad that we had representation from the elementary level, and it sounds like even, and I know our kindergarten and first graders are learning to use Seesaw, and so it does seem, if people at home have the proper connections at home, that it would be doable, and I'm guessing that already got talked through by people talking to first-grade teachers and parents and things, okay? And also, it, you did include parent feedback in some of this process?
We did, we sent it to, uh, several groups, parent advisory councils, we kept it small, but yet had the parent input, because if you sent it out to everybody, we'd still be looking at emails. And ultimately, to go back to your original question, and, and Dennis can go into it a little bit as well, our kids are already using a lot of these things, and I said it was, it was an interesting point that it's, I'm not as familiar with it as my daughter is.
Yeah.
And I think that's the interesting point, that we're, we're, we say that, oh, I don't understand this, or I don't get this, but yet, as soon as you ask your daughter or your son, they're all of a sudden like, okay, this is how you do it, get out of the way. And I'm like, oh, okay, well, there it is, so.
I, I did want to add also, I thought your idea of having two committees was really clever, and it may be something we want to keep remembering, whoever thought of that, that was really, you know, really good way to really flesh things out and think about where the pitfalls are and what the benefits are. My other specific question is, in talking about implementing it, um, how to figure out whether it's going to work or not, you'd mentioned a test day, so what does a test day look like? If there isn't canceled school, what's a test day, so?
So, uh, maybe I'll let Gloria come in, but, uh, so Wakefield actually ran a test day already, successfully, and teachers had, um, because, do you want to talk about it?
Quick, I'll not speak to my thing, uh, but I, obviously, we're all very passionate about this, and this is an initiative that my own children have been going through, and this is why I feel it's so important for us to, to jump on board. But yes, West, Wakefield has been already, all the students are ready to go, all the teachers, K through 12, have provided assignments, instructions to the students, to the parents, so when this snow day does come, they already know where to log in. know where to log in, or some of the teachers that actually have information, like my, my daughter's science teacher has an experiment that we signed off as parents. The supplies are ready at home. And if the students need support with supplies, with resources, with translation services, that has already been in place. So there, there's a lot of work that, I mean, obviously, they took about 18 months of preparation in making sure that all levels were, were part of the process. And I think that's where we found such valuable information, talking to other districts and learning from them. But that's why we would hope that you would consider having, we would love to have the opportunity to have one test day here to learn from our students, our parents and our teachers, what we could do for the future.
I still don't understand what a test day would look like.
So it would, so students would still come in, but we would roll out the assignments.
So they'd come into school and work on these assignments in school?
So if we're, they, the teachers would add an additional assignment as a test to make sure that they can access it from home, and if they have any questions, that we would support them. So we will learn from the students what worked and didn't work, and also get the feedback from the parents. So one of the things that the Wakefield does regularly is, at the end of each snow day, information is sent out, surveys are sent out to students and families, what worked for you this time and what didn't work. So we're continuously learning from, from the process. But having the opportunity to test it out live and learning from it this year, I think would be very helpful in the future implementation.
Thank you.
Joe, you also mentioned, I think, some districts in our conversations through this are using Election Day. So 2020, there's obviously going to be a big election. Typically, we're not asked to have school that day at the high school, and instead of just canceling at the high school, we cancel all the schools, and that extends the day a year. But aren't some districts, again, using this not only for inclement weather, but also for days like an Election Day where they could have students out of the building, but also have learning take place? Is that?
That, that's definitely something that's come up in discussions. Off the top of my head, I don't know, I'm not sure if any districts have actually implemented that during an Election Day.
But the point of this is, it's, it comes to fruition in Wakefield, Gloria, with snow days, but the idea is that it could really be used anytime, and with the tools that we have now, learning can take place anytime, anywhere. So will we?
We have a summer piece to it as well. So we have additional component, and we want to grow it as, as learning continuing all year round. So it doesn't have to be a snow day. I think this is just the beginning, which is the exciting piece, having that continuous flow of curriculum for all of our.
And I just wanted to jump in on that, too. It's, again, this isn't a situation where teachers develop an assignment in early September, give it to students, fast forward to January, February, March, students take that assignment off the shelf and use it. The idea here, as you've heard, is, is live, real-time assignment, so that continuity of curriculum is important.
Again, that's the biggest thing. I think that we've had experience with other trials of this, and we know some other districts that have as well. A lot of times, they were trying to recover days, so they were putting together projects or assignments that tried to make up for time. This should be that if, if, if our students don't have school on Friday, our folks here would have lessons prepared that would be both posted to Seesaw or Classroom, and the students would just log in at home from whatever device, and these are things that work on any device that they have. It, it doesn't have to be an iPad, it doesn't have to be a laptop, it could be a phone, any of the devices will get the, get the assignment. And it just carries on like it would have if it was a normal day. The, the trial day, the kind of the, I don't know if dress rehearsal is the right kind of term. We do that for the MCAS testing, for example. Couple weeks before our regular MCAS days, we have a couple hours where we have everyone log in, they try it out, they make sure the technology works, they go through what the instructions so that the teachers understand, the students understand, and we just make sure we work out all the kinks and the issues beforehand. And it's been very helpful. Bob and I have dealt with it for several years. We've, we've found where we had problems or needed to fix things before we sat down and actually had the MCAS test. So that's what we're essentially talking about with a practice day, something where the kids would have an opportunity to see the assignments, make sure they knew how to get to them, make sure parents knew how to get to them, make sure they knew where to look, how to log in, make sure everything works, and then we get feedback from there and see what has to be fixed and worked on for the next time, or when it really is in place. And the last thing I would say is just to, again, what Eric said, it's not just snow days. If you're going to look at distance learning, going to look at this practice, it does not have to be just on the canceled snow day. It could be any kind of canceled day. But you also could, over time, start to look at openings in the calendar that could give your, your parents a start and end date to the school year, so they're not worried about extending years and things like that. So there's opportunity for this to grow over time. If it just starts with canceled snow days, that's a great way to start. But there is, there is opportunity for distance learning to grow beyond that.
And Ms. Simon, the last piece is, is that we built a timeline to it. So there's a, there's an actual assignment given, and then there's a timeline that goes on, which the, the assignment has to be returned. So being able to see that we didn't put too much time on the end, or not enough time, would be one of those things. We're, we're going by what other districts have done and what's worked for them, but they could have, they could want to pull back a little bit. We might have too much time or too little time to give our students the proper amount of time to actually get done what needs to be done.
Ms. Monaco?
Hi. I have some questions, actually some concerns more than questions. I'd love to say, oh, wow, this is a great idea, and let's go for it. But I've got a lot of thoughts in my head that are pushing back on me. For instance, I think for older kids, high school kids, this, this sounds great. Even probably the majority of kids in special needs situations at the high school, the majority, could probably do fine with the distance learning. I feel that we really need to focus on 180 days of student learning, one way or another, that are really solid learning days. I don't think we have any to waste, because we only have 180. So I, I look back there, although I can't see them at the moment, at Mr. Lyons, and I think about, about the children in the program at Pine Glen, that they're not going to be doing distance learning. It just isn't going to work for those kids, the special needs kids that are, that, whose needs are too serious to be able to be accommodated this way. So I guess my question is, if you have students in that category, and you also have students who have maybe less, are, you know, milder needs, but they have a lot of pullouts, like they have services with an occupational therapist, a speech therapist. So how do you accommodate those kids? Do you come up with a, do they go to school extra days and the others don't? Do you have compensatory time for them? I mean, it just, that's my problem. I think it's wonderful for those kids that can do it, but those kids that can't do it, what do we do for them?
Well, I think that was a question that has obviously come up already.
I know. My daughter put it on an email to you in, in great detail.
Yeah, well, it's not just her. I mean, I think there were other valid concerns. And in terms of the expectations of, of those students, a couple of things to keep in mind is, if they need services to complete an assignment that's given, and those services wouldn't be available that day, then we would be responsible to make sure those students get those services to complete that assignment.
Yeah, but how are you going to do it?
So I, I think in the plan, we have delineated various roles, not just teacher roles, council roles, specialist roles. And so those specialists that work with those students, that modify assignments, would still be doing that when the students come back. The assignment is given, students have two weeks to complete that assignment. So services would be provided for those students to complete those, to complete that particular assignment. So we, I, I think, you know, we would still need to provide those services to make up the time with, with the assignment that's given by that, by that particular teacher.
What do you do with a parent who, who says, it's a snow day, I want my kids to go play in the snow?
We let them go play in the snow, because that's why we built the timeline. We don't, we do not want you to sit at home while the snow is falling and people are building snowmen and having a wonderful time, and you're sitting behind a desk trying to pencil away at how many times we go around the moon.
Yeah. All right. So, so just to sum up my feelings about this, I would, I would like a real plan on how to handle the situation with special needs students. Not, well, you know, we'll accommodate somehow. I would like to see a real plan, because I think this is a great idea. I think it works wonderfully for the older kids, and I think it can work pretty well for the younger kids that are able to do it themselves, you know, that don't need someone holding their hand. But I, I do think this elementary level, it's going to be questionable for some kids, and certainly for special needs kids. And I don't know the answer. If I knew the answer, I'd say, hey, do it this way, and it, and you know, it'll be great. But I don't know the answer. I don't know how to fix this to make it work for every child. And until, I mean, I, I feel like I'm going to get phone calls from parents of these children saying, wait a minute, you're taking services away from my kid. They're not going to go to school 180 days, they're going to go 175, and in five days, I get to take care of them at home and, and when they should be in school, and they're not learning from me the way they learn in school. And I just think that piece of it has to be solved.
Thank you. Yeah, again, read through the plan. We addressed some of the special ed pieces within the plan. I know you just recently got it, but we can certainly.
Well, I just have it on my iPad. I don't think it has all those details. We, we don't have the whole plan.
Right. We, we have the commonly asked, frequently asked questions, and then it says, see proposal for detailed responses, but we don't.
Can we provide a copy of the entire proposal?
Yeah, so Joe, we, I'll, we can make sure we get that.
And again, after looking at, looking at it, you know, the special ed piece, we know it's a big question that, that's come up. And if, after looking at it, again, we want to get community feedback, too, we can.
If you can find an answer to that piece, I'm all for it.
Yeah.
I just want to jump in, if you don't mind. I was on the call. Obviously, every school district in the state has the same question. I mean, everybody has special ed students, and there's not one answer, because not all of the students have the same needs. So we can talk, we can share with what other districts have done, and you can decide comfort level of different options. But certainly, nobody's proposing that we don't provide services that we'd be responsible for, that we're taking those away on these days, that we're not going to have some compensatory option for parents. So, but we can share more detail on that, definitely. It was everything on a Google Doc, which doesn't work on paper. All the links were there, so we'll make sure you get access to those.
Thank you for doing so much work, and, and, you know, hopefully, we'll find a good answer, and we'll be able to, to move forward. I would love to. I just feel that piece of it holding me back.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And I have to say, in all of our work, many districts think Burlington could be the pioneers a year ago. So I'm worried for you to know.
Didn't snow that year, did it?
We did.
Yeah.
We did it?
With the bees. I remember the bees. Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, just a quick comment and a, and a question, I suppose. I, I also want to thank you for all the hard work you put into this. I know it's a lot of work, and I think it's, it's well worth it, because if it, if we can make it work, I think it's going to benefit everyone. It seems to me, though, if we're part of this pilot project, and maybe Erica or Patrick knows the answer, couldn't we do a test day and get the state not to count it as a day we missed? Because right now, what I'm hearing is, if we do a test day, they're going to add it on to the end of the year, and here we are, part of this whole pilot.
They're going to test them while the kids are in school.
No, we're going to keep them at home.
No, no, we would keep the kids in school. We would just, we would do a dry run if you would, like nothing had ever happened, just using the assignment to make sure that everybody could log in, everybody could get on. They would have the timeline, and we'd be able to see if it worked. We would.
Wouldn't it be more effective, though, to do a test day and have the kids stay at home? And have the state say, we're not going to count that?
We like the way you're thinking right now.
But, you know, the test, again, one of the, one of the recommendations was the test day be the first snow day. You know, that was one of our recommendations. And then, again, see all the questions, concerns that come as a result of that, and, and address them.
If you want to do it ahead of time, I was just thinking, get the state to say, yes, you guys pilot this thing, and we're not going to make you stay an extra day at the end of the year.
So again, Madam Chair, I think part of the flaws in the conversation the first time were that it, it felt rushed, and the feedback that I got from you all was it felt like we asked you to make a decision quickly. And so I wanted to, again, make sure that we had time, you had time to absorb this, to ask questions. Again, Ms. Monaco, your questions are right on sort of track, and I, and I think we have to do a good job providing some options and thinking about it. The reality is, curriculum is changing, and how, where the tools we have to deliver curriculum is also changing. But that, I still like the idea of having sort of that sacred learning time, and it's just a conversation we need to have. And I didn't want to have it in October for that winter, when we just wouldn't have enough time to sort of discuss it, for you to think about it, for us to ask questions, and for them to come back. I think I, what I learned from this process, which I sort of should have thought about more, is the last time we did this, the pilot year, was more of a central office-generated idea. And I'm assuming this allows me to skip that after-school meeting in the auditorium that we had last time. So I'm, I'm hoping that we don't need to have that now, which is great, and probably should have done this the first time around. So I really appreciate, again, your time, your authorship, the creativity that you've demonstrated to put this together. I think that's great. And Diane, I think we would still need to talk about this, sort of in an official.
Can I ask, Madam Chair, if you would permit me to give the association's position on this at this point?
So again, but we would, we would need to sort of have that, have that conversation as well. But again, I, I just, thank you. No, presenting in sort of a short amount of time doesn't reflect the amount of work that went in. I think we need to have more conversations about it. Again, I'm not saying we're through winter this year. Again, I'm understanding what happened last year. But I think just having that time to absorb and to think about it, I'd like to reach out to Doug in, in Wakefield and have some conversations and, and just, you know, see where the pitfalls are. We did a lot of surveying of parents first time, so I think you guys have seen all that as well, and there is sort of some feedback that they still want their kid to experience a snow day. So again, I like the idea of not going into the next week. So there's so many options with this, but I think having a, an extended learning opportunity, and Dennis, as you're saying, not just about winter, but just having that as a tool in our toolbox, I think is just going to be part of education in 2019 and moving forward. So again, I can't thank you enough, Madam Chair. I think.
Ms. Marcus? And then Ms. Simon.
I have obviously been here a number of times to encourage the school committee to consider a remote learning or distance learning situation. So you know where I stand on it personally. The one thing I am responsible for, of course, is protecting the working conditions of every teacher, every educator in the district. And with that in mind, the association's negotiating committee is taking a look at this just to see where we want to make sure that we have a conversation with you to list what are those working conditions on a extended learning day in this particular case. And I am, the only, the only thing I heard here that concerned me was this idea of going beyond days when we actually can't open school. The one thing in terms of protecting unit work is certainly, you know, I would not like to see us go to, you know, three days a week, you work with students, and the other two days a week, you're working from home, or we've decided to extend till eight o'clock at night because we have the, the ability to do that. So I just want to, so, but it is a real change in working conditions. What is the expectation, and how do you know that you're doing what you need to do, but also not being in a situation where it becomes all-consuming? So for us, we're taking a look to see what it would take to have an agreement that would in fact support going forward with a remote learning plan that also delineates the working conditions for, for the staff.
Thank you. Ms. Simon, I have another question.
Yeah, my other question is related to all of Mrs. Monaco's concerns and the teachers' working conditions, but I, I don't see it right now, but I thought when I read this, there was something about teacher availability during the snow day, but if students aren't necessarily going to be working on it during the snow day, but within two weeks. So where does that teacher availability come in, and how does that meet some of the questions that Mrs. Monaco asked and that, that Mrs. Marcus raised as well?
So again, I think that should be in the plan, but teachers would be available, teachers at, for a set amount of time. They're going to be pushing out the assignment depending on how they set it up that morning, and teachers would need to be available to respond to any, you know, questions that, that may come up. I think we would need to kind of narrow down and talk a little bit more specifically about how, how that would look with. down and talk a little bit more specifically about how, how that would look with, with Diana.
Okay, good. As long as it's in the discussion going on, good.
Well, thank you. I want to thank everyone that took part for your time and energy. It's a great first step for us to look through, to have a basis now moving forward. We have some questions that I'm sure we'll be getting answers to as we move forward and potentially for next year, this will be on the table as a discussion with regard to how we will, the board feels to proceed with it. But it'll be, I have children who are with Wakefield's children a lot and I've heard a lot about this from the parents and the students. It's all been positive for that group of people and it would be nice if I don't hear again, why can't we do this? Wakefield's doing this. Why can't we do this? So, you know, I look forward to the continued discussions with this. And thank you and those that weren't here tonight that took part in this too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, nice job, Sean. Thank you. Dennis, thanks.
Okay, next we have communication.
Madam Chair, we turn to Patrick.
At the last meeting, we talked about the middle school students who had won the Scholastic Art Awards. And I now have information on the high school students. And I also want to, if you don't mind, it's not on the agenda, read some names from the high school music program as well, because I think we, we have not had a chance to cite some of those students who took part in the district festival. But first, for the high school students, there were four students who won Scholastic Art Awards. And I apologize if I mispronounce a name. I think I'm close here. Martello Cesar won two silver keys for his drawing and illustration work in the BHS art program. Michaela Giordano had a honorable mention for a mixed media. Michelle Johnson had an honorable mention for her art portfolio. And Anna Pearl had two silver keys, one in design and one in drawing and illustration. And I just want to mention Anna and Michaela are both freshmen, so that's tremendous. And then Michelle and Martello are both seniors. Back in January, we had some students from the BHS music program that auditioned for the senior district festival. So 41 students from BHS auditioned, 12 were accepted to this prestigious event. And out of the 12, there were seven chorus students that made it. They were Katie Clifford, Paul Conti, Mikey Fazio, Cam Noonan, and Luciano Corsi, Jensen Wagner, and Erica Zawinski. And then we had five band students as well, Michaela Di Francesco, Kalin Frisora, Michaela Nurr, Ben Green, and Julia Margalit. And one other highlight was that the students have an opportunity to try out for the All-State Festival when they're there. And the music program was very happy to announce that Katie Clifford will represent the high school at Symphony Hall in March. So I just want to highlight those students as well because I don't think we had the opportunity to do so up until this point, so.
That's wonderful. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations to those kids and to the art and music departments. I think that's fantastic.
And we have the elementary principals here and we know that they didn't just get to high school with those talents, that they were nurtured right through from elementary on up. So, next on the agenda, we do have our FY19 financial update. We are going to move that to March 5th and do one March 5th and March 26th. But we do have, okay, we do have a new member that we'd like to welcome, Nicole.
So I know that this has been a long time coming. We finally have found a financial analyst. Jenny, if you want to come up. This is-
Welcome.
Jenny, she joined our business office team last Wednesday. She comes with us, to us with great experience from, from schools. She has a background in accounting. She's currently working on her master's in accounting and she's familiar with Miunas, so we're very lucky to have her on board.
Hey, welcome. Thank you so much. I'm happy to be here. Thank you for Nicole, to Nicole for that nice introduction. She basically told you everything that I was going to tell you, so. But thank you.
Thank you.
We greatly appreciate.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Ms. Kasha has had other things going on right now, so we're just going to move the two financial updates into our month, month of three meetings.
What are we doing?
Great. Thank you. Old business. Is there any old business that we would-
Yeah, Madam Chair, just, just very briefly, I did get a chance to watch some of the meeting last week and I do apologize for the committee for being out of town. I think there was some benefit of a snow day. Too bad we couldn't have done a distance learning school committee meeting, but I appreciate that. I know there was a conversation on some religious observance and the calendar that, the religiously neutral calendar. And I just wanted to thank the committee for sort of moving the calendar in that direction. I do think it's important. I know there was lots of conversations and I think they're important conversations for us to have. And I like the idea of continuing to work with teachers. I think you saw from today, good things can result when teachers are involved and asked. So, would like to talk to teachers about working with me on some sort of statement in the fall. Again, I got the idea of not itemizing things because that might be, who do we exclude, who do we include? I think that was a comment that was made. But just coming up with a, sort of a strong joint statement that I'd like to share with the committee, with teachers, and it might be something that, you know, the committee can endorse or look, just look at ahead of time that I can get out to all staff in the fall, just as a, just as a reminder, as a way of, just, again, taking a strong statement and allowing, making sure, informing parents that, that sort of this is what our beliefs are and how we're trying to be supportive of everybody. So I think that's something that I'd like to do. So I just wanted to thank the committee and Patrick, Patrick's not here, for, for having the conversation. Again, I know those, those conversations can be, can be challenging and I, again, I'm sorry I missed it, but I appreciate that you all had the conversation.
And then at your desk, we do have the updated calendar for 2019, '20 with the end day of June 17th now, this last meeting that had been pushed forward to the 19th. And then if there's snow days, the 24th.
Were you voting on this tonight, Madam Chair?
Um, no, it was already voted on, but-
It's such draft.
So next we have new business. And would we like to do the school improvement and then the budget with them?
Yeah, I think we can, we can do that. So I'd like to invite up the elementary principals. You know, by state regulation, that school committee has to sort of get presented or see a school improvement plan from sort of all the levels. We do the elementary schools all together. Again, you've experienced this for a while now. I want to thank the elementary principals for coming tonight and I think connecting the school improvement conversations with the budget just makes sense. And I think it saves sort of a night out for people who are already out many, many nights. And so it's really going to be a, a combined conversation and sort of making that connection. So with that, would sort of, you guys have your whole routine down, I'm assuming?
I think we're good.
So that would be, that's, that's wonderful. And, and then Nicole will jump right into the budget after they're, after they're done. And so, thank you for, thank you for all that. So, you have to go back to the beginning.
All right. So, good evening. Thank you for inviting us back to the table again. Doesn't seem like that long ago actually, but we wanted to take the opportunity to update you and everyone on where we're at with our district's Plan for Success. So as an elementary team, we've been working on a three, four-year plan for success. And this is-
Hi Nicole, I'm just sorry, just for ways of meeting subcommittee, Nicole McDonald from Francis Wyman, just, thank you.
Thank you. So, the Plan for Success has four major strategic objectives. So we are focusing on updating the committee and all of our constituents, I guess, on, on our progress and where we're at. So the four areas that we focused on over the past few years are engaged learning, building relationships across all aspects of the school, improving communication, and then making sure our facilities and operations are updated and, and accessible for every, every child. So I wanted to take a minute to just focus on the first strategic objective, which is engaged learning. And under that initiative, we've been very busy, obviously, growing our programs. Some of the highlights for that, we've been developing flexible co-teaching models. So using our specialists, our special education teachers, our ELL teachers. We're developing as much co-teaching methods as we possibly can to help meet all the students' needs. There's been a focus throughout all the schools',all classrooms on the D cap, which is the district's Curriculum Accommodated Plan, making sure that everybody understands that accommodations are accessible for students, not just through special education. So that's been a focus for our school. Having informative sessions with the PAC, the Parent Advisory Committee for Special Education, each year at the beginning of the year, all of our team chairpersons and the special ed director meet with the PAC and have information sessions just to help clarify some of that special education information and the process there at school. On staff models, we have teachers who have taken on building and developing our peer-to-peer observation models. So teachers can get into other classrooms and, and visit other teachers and build their classroom instructional practice and build capacity that way, using our, our own professionals. Again, a focus on ELLs, sped general ed partnerships within the classroom, lots of collaboration going on, just to help make sure that we're meeting the needs of students across the entire day. And finally, KTL, Keys to Literacy. That's been a, a major initiative across all grade levels across the entire district. So there's lots of training, modeling, and inclusion in Keys to Literacy, which is a focus on reading and comprehension. So that's in the inclusion objective. And then social emotional learning is the other key area of focus under engaged learning. So PBIS, all of the elementary schools really feel like we've just done an incredible job of developing our positive behavioral intervention system. So every school has their own, their own motto, system, all very similar, but with a little bit individual twist for each school. And really a focus on reinforcing positive behavior in the school and have come a long way over the years. Social emotional learning is a focus. And under social emotional learning, obviously responsive classroom training has, has been something we've talked about previously. A lot of training has gone on, a lot of dedicated time in the classrooms to teachers implementing responsive classroom. And again, hoping the outcome is just more positive relationships with students, students taking ownership of their own behavior in the school and being connected to a community that cares about them. District-wide screeners is a newer conversation, just getting a better sense of students' mental health and being aware of their own, their own, being more self-aware of just their state of mind. So that's a newer conversation for us. And then guidance counselors are really working on implementing lessons across all classrooms, all grade levels. So they're not working just with intervention, but targeting the entire, the entire student population to meet those needs. So that's a lot and a little bit of space, but a real targeted focus on meeting the needs of all students and addressing their social emotional learning has been a, a key area for us in the past two to three years.
Nicole, just two minutes on the DESA, the DESAMini, what, just what is it so people-
Yeah, so the, the DEVERO is a strengths, a student strengths assessment that we've implemented as, as a screener for students' behavior, social, emotional status. And we give it, it's assessed three times a year for students in the fall, once again in January, and then in May. And it's just another universal screener that we're using for social emotional learning to help us track students' progress and make sure that no students are going under the radar in terms of social emotional needs. Okay, that was quick. Your turn. Oh, and there's us, Read Across America, which again, happens for us on Friday this week, which is the celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday. And then that was Math Night, Community Math Night, which we recently had at Francis, Francis Wyman.
All right. Our second objective that we wanted to update you on is, was focused around relationships. Relationships among students, relationships between staff and students, administrators across the district, and obviously families and the larger partnerships that we're focusing on in the community. So some of the things we wanted to highlight around cultural competence is kind of some discovery and some exploration around, you know, are children seeing themselves in books, in the libraries, in texts that they're learning to read, in guided reading situations? So there's been a, a pretty comprehensive review and a, a kind of look at what books are, are in our libraries and do they reflect the students that are in our classrooms. Bridges is a multi-generational program that I hope most people are familiar with. I love this program. It comes in right around this year in, in Memorial. And that's an opportunity for generations related or not related to students in the building to come and partake and share some historical perspective on different ages. The cultural calendar, as Dr. Conti mentioned, is a, an awareness calendar. The interfaith community outreach, we had the opportunity to visit a synagogue earlier this month. We wish to kind of exceed that, you know, pursue that in, in other interfaith areas. And then the use of interpreters and translation services, we really felt like we needed to highlight this, again, as an awareness around translation. I know in my building, I've had Japanese translators, boy, there's probably been about four or five different languages that translators have come for meetings in my building. And obviously, translation services through technology and Google Translator, and obviously document, district documents. And then on the teacher capacity side, there's been a terrific bridge for, and kudos to the science curriculum, Sean and Wendy, to work with the ELL teachers in creating curriculum that focuses on including all learners. So that work has just been, was this past summer, I believe, and is now in the classrooms. The Young Conference collaboration, that speaks to the opportunities that we've given teachers to put together groups, interests that they have around improving their awareness and their knowledge of, of difference. The idea is training continues to be an important part of this community. And Imagine Learning software was, is software that ELL teachers across the district are implementing and using for literacy acquisition.
Just a brief history on Bridges now, just because you may find it interesting, is Merna Saltzman, town meeting member, I think, can't say, what, six or seven years ago, I think. It's been a while. And she participated in the Bridges program in Sudbury, I think with maybe her grandchildren. And she said, we need to do something like that here. So there's a set intergenerational curriculum. It takes place in fourth grade. I believe there are six lessons. And then we match up seniors, senior citizens. We work a lot with the Council on Aging and they come into the schools and the kids explain what it's like to be a fourth grader in 2019. And they talk about what it was like to be a fourth grader when they were fourth graders. And they form some friendships and they talk about what it means to get old and they shouldn't sort of, because they might normally or not normally interact with people of that generation. And then it ends with a lunch, right? We, we take the kids to the, to the Council on Aging and they show them what their classrooms are like and what their days are like. And we've had lots of friendships develop between Burlington seniors and our fourth graders. So, we started off at one school and now it's in every fourth grade classroom at every school. So we're always looking for- So we're always looking for volunteers to participate. On the Bridges side, we have plenty of fourth graders, but we're looking for more folks on the more experienced side of the spectrum. So if you're at all interested, please contact the central office, or certainly contact the school, any of the schools, and we will find a time for you to come in and spend some time in fourth grade.
Is there an age? What's the cutoff?
There might be a limit.
It's your turn, Tom. All are welcome.
So our next initiative that we wanted to update you on was our communication initiative. And within that, within communication, it also includes collaboration and partnerships. So we start with principal meetings, principal meetings both with staff, principal meetings with Dr. Conti, principal meetings amongst ourselves. It's been a great way for us to share ideas, to collaborate, to share information. Moving on to school councils, each school has a school council, which consists of teacher representatives, parent representatives, and community representatives. And within those councils, we discuss different topics within the school and within the district. All four of our schools are extremely lucky to have very, very strong PTOs that are very, very supportive of both our staff and our students. I believe each one, I think, runs either three or four events a year that are well-attended. We're extremely, extremely lucky to have our PTOs and the volunteers. Social media, so we've increased our social media presence at the elementary level. We have a very strong Instagram presence at a few of the schools, showing really day-to-day life at what each of the schools looks like, everything from, you know, classwork, from what happens at lunch, what happens at art, what happens at PE, really gives people the chance, that aren't able to be in our schools, to see what happens at school every day. Additionally, our new district website has a lot of different features. It has calendars. It has blog posts that we're able to do, so it's a great way to get out information. CSOW, which actually was talked about a little bit earlier by the district, by the Learning Committee, has been a great portfolio for students to show their work, to be able to see it from day to day. The kids are able to choose the work that they include in this portfolio. They're able to take photos of it. They're able to record their voices. They can do so many amazing things with it. And it's, once again, a great way, a lot of times, you know, parents ask, "What did you do in school today?" And everybody says nothing, the common answer, right? But if you go on your child's CSOW, you're able to actually see what's going on day to day, and the progress that kids are making through different reports and different things that they're working on. And then our math nights, both at the district level and at the school level. We had a district math night this year, which was really well-attended, and each of our schools had their own math night. And then in terms of partnerships, we're extremely fortunate to have a strong partnership with the Burlington Police Department, our school resource officers. Keith Shepherd and Vito Costa have been a great resource, great resource for us. Last year, Memorial went to visit the Millipore Corporation, who had just opened a new facility, and they went to a science lab. I think this was the first picture.
It was a great day. They had a whole lab set up, and the kids got to have different experiments.
And then one last thing, a community partnership, Mathnasium, which is a tutoring service. They have a few different offices, I think, in Burlington, one in Lexington. They've actually partnered with us on our math nights, which has been a huge help for us.
Before you go on, if you could just introduce yourself, you're one of our newest.
Sure. I'm David Rosenblatt, the principal at Fox Hill School.
Last but not least.
John, I'm sorry I'm editorializing, but just go back for a second. Millipore has been just a great partner. So their CEO, Dr. Bhatra, Udit Bhatra, is very committed to public education. The yellow thing you're looking at is they built a Curiosity Cube. It's basically a mobile lab that's in a container that actually travels all over the country. And it really spent some of its first days in Burlington. So Memorial kids went in there. You didn't show the picture with Governor Baker, because Governor Baker was in the lab with his glasses on with our kids. And then I know the cube went to the middle school and was at Marshall Simons to start its journey across the country. So again, I sort of weighing into waters, I know we're not supposed to talk about adults, but I'm saying the corporate partners in Burlington, I think, have been very willing to, again, work with us in terms of bettering our experience. And I still think we don't take enough advantage of sort of where we are geographically, and we have such great opportunities for our kids, and we just have to continue to expand those opportunities. And again, just Dr. Bhatra and Millipore, his staff has just, again, have been just very welcoming, so.
John Lyons, principal of Pine Glen Elementary. And another initiative we have in our, is looking at student safety. And some of the things that have gone on in the buildings and our facilities, some of our operation initiatives have been filtered water stations. And these have been invaluable and wonderful. They're great for the environment. Students will bring a water bottle, fill it up. There's a little digital caption that says how much we're saving on water bottle, as I'm kind of being hypocritical with my water bottle here right now, thinking of this. But it's great, and it's also led to less water on the floor, so we had less slippage and students falling, so that was a terrific benefit. Another piece that we do just with student safety is our protocol drills. This is working with fire and police to have lockdowns, the fire drills. We typically do two a year, two lockdown, two fire drills. Another piece we've seen is some kitchen updates. Recently at Fox Hill and Pine Glen, we've had a new fridge walk-in work very well, and that was wonderful, because I think if we didn't do that, it would have led to much bigger problems structurally with the building. Another piece that's been critical is the pavement of the sidewalks, where we park. And what we've seen is that, that's been another critical safety piece, because we're starting to have some big gaps where people could trip and fall, so that's just been wonderful. Another piece that's always been consistent is painting. And it's just been wonderful that we've had this association with the sheriffs. We, I don't know, I'm trying to think of the inmates coming out and helping us, so that's been a wonderful relationship. We've also seen some bathroom renovations, and particularly at Pine Glen, we've seen a lot of bathroom accessibility, two bathrooms, that we did a lot of work on this summer to make them much more accessible for all students was a huge piece, as well as a new fence at Pine Glen that was installed this fall, that has just been fantastic, safety-wise. And we've had some new learning spaces installed at Memorial and at Fox Hill. And what's very nice is that quite often, when people, in particular, come to Pine Glen, they can't believe the age of the building. That's the oldest building of the schools, and the upkeep we have for facilities and operations, and it's just wonderful. We thank the committee for their involvement and their support in having safe schools and safe buildings.
And again, I know for Ways and Means that you're often looking for ways that the school and town collaborate. I think the paving projects are a good example of a success there. So we've gotten, I think, Francis Wyman. Memorial was a new school, but Fox Hill and Pine Glen have all been included as part of the joint paving projects with the town. And I think, again, we have some small projects to keep up with, but again, it's been a very successful partnership. And again, I want to thank sort of Bob and the town for putting all that work together, so.
So this is our last slide, and we really just put it up there to kind of highlight that this, none of this work ever gets truly completed. So these were just some of our target areas that we'd like to delve deeper in, so we're just going to quickly go through that.
So the first one is SEL, Social Emotional Learning. And as a team, you know, with a focus on social-emotional as one of our target objectives, the next step would be really delving a little bit deeper into trauma-informed instruction, where our students are coming in with just higher, higher-level needs. I often hear myself say and others say, you know, "We need more game on these students. We're just, you know, our training didn't address some of the high-level needs that some of these students have." So responsive classroom is wonderful for the broad spectrum, but digging a little deeper and obtaining more training for students with higher-level needs is really the next step for us to help these students.
And then in the area of curriculum, obviously, we want to delve into some of the new frameworks that are out, and always stay kind of in a current place on are we meeting the framework needs? So that's an area that crosses all overall learning.
In the area of Response Intervention, RTI, I think we do a really great job of giving these universal screeners and finding the appropriate interventions for students. One thing that we as principals have been talking a lot lately is digging deeper into the data that the students produce, in finding ways that we can use that data to tailor the tier-one instruction a little bit more, and working first amongst ourselves and then working with our staff to do that.
Another piece we're looking at is our special needs population, and meeting the needs of all learners. And I'd like to thank Mrs. Monaco, Ms. Simon, members of the Ways and Means Committee for coming to Pine Glen for a day and visiting us and checking out some of our programs. And as we're seeing, the program originally, a number of years back, started with three students. It's 25 this year. We're looking at 31 next year. We possibly will be looking at more staffing, additional space, things of that nature. So that'll be up and coming. And our final piece is just safety. We work to have these continued strong relationships with our police and fire, our first responders. Having school resource officers is just an incredible asset to have that communication. And as we go forward to just looking at, recently, we did some evacuation drills, things of that nature, expanding on the number of drills we do beyond just the lockdown. And we just, all the four of us, want to thank the committee for your support throughout all this, all you do for us, our buildings, our staffing, allowing us to hire just the incredibly high quality we have of teachers in all our buildings. Thank you.
Questions, comments? You rendered them speechless, Mr. Nelson.
Well, I think, I want to congratulate you for surviving, I think, another, almost another year with less than an ideal situation in terms of the number of administrators we have in the buildings. I know everyone, I think, here on the committee shares my concern that we've got some tight times with our budgets, and I don't think this year we're going to be able to add in the administrators that we need. And I don't think I can support a budget next year if we don't start addressing that issue. You're all working hard. There's so many responsibilities that we pile on administrators and elementary school teachers, year after year after year. There's another, it seems like there's another three or four initiatives every single year. The students are coming into the buildings with more and more needs, more diversity, more children with ELL issues and things of that nature. And I just think that we have to get more help to the administrators, so that you can do your job and be there and continue to do the good work that you're doing. So I don't know, we haven't seen our whole budget this year. You'll be here. When are they coming back?
I think we're doing it now.
Tonight, we're going to talk, filling over into the next session.
If I can.
I think the work you're doing is great, and I just hope that we can have a lot of conversations about adding back the administrators that we've unfortunately had to cut out. I think it's reaching a point where it's almost a crisis, I think, with the number of students that we have in the elementary schools and the number of high-need students that we have, so.
I appreciate your concern, Mr. Nelson, and as a leader who's incredibly appreciative of all the support that we get. I am the principal that had an outstanding assistant principal, and now do not. I don't know whether that's a good thing. It was a great two years. It leads me to my next comment, which is, I didn't even propose an assistant principal for Memorial School, knowing the demands that other, that exists across the district. But I would like to publicly state that the job has a tremendous, it has a managerial component, which is exceedingly getting larger, and it also has a leadership component that I think is the work that we all truly want to do. So there is a, we can do it all, but it gets much easier, having had two years, that the decisions that I made and the leadership decision and the risk-taking that I took as an administrator was available to me, because I had another person who was handling some of the managerial pieces. So I appreciate that you recognize that. Just wanted to thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Just want to thank you for coming and seeing a lot of these school improvement plans over the years, and it's kind of interesting to see how they evolve. But I thought you guys did a nice job tonight in terms of just focusing on kind of the main, the main things that we're trying to do here, and gave a nice summary of all four of them. And I found it very beneficial in terms of content, and I appreciate it. As far as echo the comments that have already been made in terms of appreciating all the hard work that you guys do. We all understand that, and, you know, we have the balancing test every year, and it's always a, it's not a question of finding needs, it's a question of being able to address as many of the needs as we can. So appreciate your work. Keep it up, and look forward to speaking about the budget momentarily.
I, first of all, wanted to say, when you all sat down, I just got this great big smile on my face. I just really appreciate all of what you all do at our schools. And, you know, tonight's another example, all the progress that you made on these goals that were set three years ago, four years ago, and how you're thinking about where else do we want to improve. And it's just always wonderful working with all of you, so thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Monica?
It's interesting Martha said that, because I was just thinking, the four of you, well, first I was laughing about the girl side of the gym and the boy side. But when I got beyond that, I thought, what a great team of elementary principals we have. You seem like you really work well together. And it's very satisfying to feel as though the plan that you've presented and that you're all into it and involved, and it all comes together, and it's nice. So I have, I have just three other notes. So first of all, as the Memorial principal and David, as the Fox Hill principal, you have a vice principal. How do you manage all of the detailed evaluations of every single teacher in your building without an assistant? How do you do it?
What do we, how do we want to start that conversation? That's a great question. In addition to kind of the managerial offload that an assistant can provide, a lead person, they also share the load of evaluations. So when Mr. Rosenblatt left my building, he handed me 17 of his evaluations that now became 30, about 36 for me.
That's my point.
So there's a reality to that. What I will say, very confidently, I'm glad I'm not a new administrator, so I'm going to pass some of my support to a new administrator who has to carry a single load. I at least had the opportunity to share that load and have more relationships. I had time with my staff to know that the conversations, quite honestly, that can happen in the bathroom, in the hallway, in my office, all equal times for me to share what I've observed, what I'm seeing, what their concerns are. It happens in every interaction. Not a formal evaluation process, but certainly a, I know what's happening for you, I know what's happening in your classroom, and to provide that support. But the logistical pieces of the evaluation process are, quite honestly, literally close to impossible.
Yeah, it's a nightmare. I know it is.
I'm trying not to answer that as definitively as I just did.
So I guess, I guess I have a comment, which is, I personally, as a school committee member, feel that we're letting you down by not providing the assistance that you need. I think our budget is too tight. I think our guidelines are too small. And I think that we are in a tough spot. You know, maybe I shouldn't be saying it the way I'm saying it, but I think we need more money to properly fund what we need for the schools. And that's one example that is so easy to pick out, because anyone who has had to do evaluations knows how difficult they are under the new, or it's not new anymore, but the new process. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, an awful lot of work, and when you have a sidekick to, you know, help you, yeah, it makes a huge difference and it's so much better for the kids because you have time to spend with them. Both of you would, you know? Now, this is going to be a little throwback to the, the previous presentation, and I'm not going to ask you to answer it now, but at some point in time, if you have any thoughts on how to make the distance learning work at the elementary level and for the kids with special needs that have the need for so many services, if you have any input for us, we'd love to hear it, or at least I think everybody would. And then my last comment is to Mr. Lyons, which is, that day that we spent at your school, the kids in the DSA program, they were just beautiful, beautiful children. I hope some of the parents recognize just what delightful children they are. I have to say, I thoroughly enjoyed meeting so many of the teachers, but especially the kids. They were just dolls, they really were.
Well, thank you for the first part. I, you know, was watching it and just the level of detail of what it is that's going into these programs, you know, from the D cap to PBIS to the, the data, the co-teaching, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot and it's, it's very difficult to do it well when you have so many little people who are changing things every day in how we're working with them. And just that time and that effort to, to really look at these programs and put them in place and give them that, that effort for our students is just wonderful and you clearly work very well together and have a supporting relationship, which is also equally important too. So, I want to thank you for being role models, you know, all the way down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Outstanding, so I guess, thank you. You guys are awesome. The message again is that elementary school isn't your parents' elementary school anymore. So I hope some of the Ways and Means members who visited realize that it's not, it's a very different environment that we are asked to create and we're really trying to meet the needs of all kids and bring all kids to very high levels of expectation and it's, it's just a different environment. So, so I think some of the resources we need do look different than people might have experienced when they were in elementary school or when they experienced it, but it is a very different, a different environment. And Ms. Creedon, you mentioned yesterday, maybe we need to do more school visits or school days because it is such a different, different experience that I shouldn't assume that everyone sort of understands or is familiar or comfortable and maybe we need to do more of that. So that was a great suggestion.
Really important for us to see where our money is going, it's definitely important. I thought, I loved every second of this presentation.
Thank you.
I do just have one piece of feedback.
Can you take the microphone?
Yeah.
Thank you. I loved every bit of your presentation, just one piece of feedback is, you used a lot of abbreviations like PBIS and SEL. If you could have like a key.
Yes.
I tried to identify.
That's a, yeah.
And you had so much information and it was all so encouraging and great to see, but half of the abbreviations I wasn't clear with. So, it was a great, great explanation, thank you.
Thank you.
Lot of acronyms.
Yeah, a lot of.
Great, thank you.
So Madam Chair, I think we should move right, switch on up, so if we could jump the agenda to the, what was it, eight E, the draft budget for elementary schools.
Yep.
So I'll turn it over to.
So, what I just passed out to you is a summary of all of the positions that were requested for FY '20. They are included within the budget document, but I realized that I hadn't given you guys a summary page of all those, so I thought that that might be a little, a little easier to look at. So, we can, I don't know, I guess go by, school by school and you guys can talk and field questions on your budgets.
I don't know what we're seeing this.
So small. We can start with Frances Wyman.
Frances Wyman didn't have a lot of change. Actually, we're three percent under. The change came from, as, as a team, we had discussed decreasing the teacher's supply budget, so last year they, they got a larger amount than they had previously. And then this year, knowing that the budget was a little bit tighter, we decreased that amount per teacher and decided on a little bit smaller amount for some of our specialists who don't have full classrooms, who work with smaller groups of students. So that item on educational supplies, I think, is the big reduction. So each teacher, instead of getting $500 at the beginning of the year, would get $400 and the specialist would get 150, with guidance counselors getting a little bit more, not quite 400, but a little bit more, I think it was 300, is that what, I'm not sure. So the, the reduction in that came, as a group, we had decided, as a budget consideration, to decrease that a smaller, to a smaller amount. So that changed my line item minus 21%, which is where generally the, the decrease, why it turned out to be a little bit less than level funded. But otherwise, there were not much changes in the same amount of equipment, replacing chairs. We have a gradual equipment replacement for teachers' desks that are about 30 years, 30 to 50 years old, so we gradually replace some of the teacher's equipment and a classroom, a grade level of student chairs for equipment. So all of those things are standard and the same as what we've had previously.
Again, just very briefly, and I owe you information and I'll get it to you, I promise I don't have it tonight, but Nicole, you're a five-section school, so Frances Wyman has five sections of K, one, two, three, four, five. We had a bulge in a class three years ago.
Second grade this year.
So it was, we've had six Ks, six ones, six twos, and I think we're going to absorb that into third grade, mostly because we don't have a classroom, so we're going to go back down to five for, for third grade. So there is going to be a bump in class size in grade three at Frances Wyman because we're going to go from six to, six homerooms to five homerooms there. But again, we're going to need that position somewhere else and again, would love to, again, we have about 16 classrooms at each grade level across the district and so we're starting to bump into limitations in terms of where we can put classes, so I just wanted to mention that. So you'll see a change in configuration next year.
Okay. We can move on to Memorial.
So Memorial is a four-session, each grade level has four sessions, and I have no ability to get bigger, given the amount of classrooms that I have. So Memorial's budget stayed basically, bottom line, the same with the addition of Envision, additional math consumables through Envision, so that's what accounted for my 3% increase.
Can we get copies of these? It's hard to see them. I don't mean this, this minute, but can we, in the future, get paper copies of them for meetings?
Oh, paper?
Meetings, yeah. Just for the meetings. Like this one, only.
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Page seventeen in what?
Of the budget that was sent.
Oh, okay. But was it sent electronically?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I didn't print it.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
I just had a question and I'm sorry, the Envision, so you need to add more to it? The program more?
What was itemized on my budget from last year had an increase, I apologize if I wasn't clear about that.
Okay, all right. It's, it's nothing in addition.
It is not in addition, it just was underfunded.
Yep, perfect, all right. Thank you.
And I don't know if we're to talk about human beings, but I, Memorial's not asking for any additional human beings.
Okay.
Why?
Well, I'd love an assistant principal, but.
Yeah, so would we.
And now for Fox Hill.
So at Fox Hill, there's only a slight increase from last year, we're only going up $372. One area that we dropped in why the, the increase was so low, student newsletters, student news magazines is something that we had absorbed in our budget. There are some teachers that wanted to go to a digital version, which lowered the price. There are some teachers that wanted to combine with other classrooms, so that was a somewhat expensive item that had, had reduced in cost a bit. We're currently at, we have five kindergartens, five kindergartens, we have four classes from one through four, and then we have three fifth, fifth grades. It looks like, based on enrollment, we might need to maintain five kindergartens and go up to five first grades, which would be adding a class. And then additionally in the budget, I had requested two positions, one being a guidance counselor. As the social, emotional needs of our students in our buildings are increasing, it's become very challenging for, for one guidance counselor and our school psychologist to balance all of those needs. And, you know, being at Memorial last year and seeing the model with two schools, two, two school counselors and one psychologist, it really worked well for them. The counselors are able to get into classrooms and do lessons, the kids are able to have a lot easier access to see someone, you know, and you think about guidance counselor, those needs run a great span. It could be someone just having a bad day, it could be someone that's having trouble coming to school. So there are a lot of little things that take up a lot of a guidance counselor's time. And at this point, I feel that the need is there for us to have too. And then the other request that I'm making is for a math specialist. We have a reading specialist who does a phenomenal job. The area of math in intervention at Fox Hill, we could use some help in that area, we have some really strong tutors, but we need someone to better organize the data, to better organize the interventions. I think that would be an important thing for us to have.
And again, David, in terms of equity, just for the committee, again, I think just from, from 10,000 feet, Memorial's enrollment in Fox Hill and enrollments are very close. In fact, Fox Hill's probably slightly larger than Memorial, again, at this time. Deb, again, you have two, two guidance counselors and a school psychologist. David, you have one guidance counselor and Deb, you have a dedicated math specialist as well. And David, you, you don't have a dedicated math specialist. So, so again, if we're just looking, we do look at need sometimes, obviously as well, but looking at just straight up enrollment, there's some inequity in the staffing and support between the two schools. It started that way again, when we built Memorial, we redistricted, Fox Hill was, we left Fox Hill with a lower enrollment at the time because we felt that's where the population was going to expand. Again, that expansion has occurred and Fox Hill now has grown to Memorial size or larger. So while the student population has expanded, we haven't kept up with the support services that we originally applied to Memorial when we, when we opened Memorial. So I think there's a real need for us to continue to push for those, for those resources. Again, David, put you on the spot, I'm sorry, it's budget time. If you had to prioritize one of the two positions, what would be your first choice?
I would say probably the guidance counselor.
The guidance, okay, thanks. Miss Creedon, you have a question?
I'm shocked by seeing as Memorial and Fox Hill. Can you give us like a general ballpark of where's in?
So our enrollment is, I actually checked today before I came here, we're at 425 students. And that's not including the lab students that are part of Fox Hill as well.
And Memorial's at about 420.
What about the other schools?
550.
320.
And again, Ms. Creedon, I promised you a breakdown, I'll get that to you. Again, I'm sorry, I will get it.
It's fine, it's just surprising to hear that. It does look good. We're full.
Wish we had built it bigger, Mr. Murphy.
Looking ahead, I guess.
Yeah, right.
Oh, Mrs. Monaco?
I feel like a troublemaker tonight. I would like the administration to put together a list of these positions that we're sorely lacking. I'm not sure, I mean, obviously Fox Hill and Memorial need assistant principals. I don't know, John, do you need an assistant principal?
I'd love one.
You know, I don't, I don't know where the break, how many evaluations do you do?
If you had an assistant principal at the schools and they broke up theirs, I would be doing more than anyone possibly.
Yeah, so I, I think it's time for the administration to figure out what we really need and put a list together and include in that math specialist. I mean, frankly, why should the kids at Fox Hill go without a math specialist if it's provided in other schools? You know, we, we have a whole equity thing that we try to stick to and why should they go without guidance counselors? It's all because of money. So in my vein of being a troublemaker tonight, I would like a list of all the positions that we really ought to have. Even if they don't fit in the budget, I'd like the list so that we can, we can talk about it and we can talk to Ways and Means and we can see what we can do about some equity here because we're clearly losing it. And I think that's one of the primary goals, is that we have equity among, among the schools. So whatever each of you feels that you are short of, including the smallest school, please let Dr. Conti know to put it on the list for the troublemaker who's requesting it. Okay, I have some other questions too, if I can find the right glasses. So enrollments, are they steady or are they creeping up?
Memorial seems to be holding steady.
You don't expect more than 420 next year?
Not in our, I haven't had recent, recent pay registration, which continues to change.
Yeah, and, and it will.
From the last look, I was on, I was on track to be the same, about usually between 65 and 70.
And again, Madam Chair, through the chair, I, I will get you a, an updated enrollment sheet, I should have done that tonight and I apologize. We would, we look at a straight sort of cohort promotion. I think the one grade that is always a mystery to us is kindergarten and, and as we get registrations, we update our numbers. So I would say we're, we're on track. We are seeing larger early elementary, so we're seeing sort of, I'm thinking district-wide, we're seeing classes over sort of 300 now pretty regularly in K, so incoming K are over 300. And you all know, we tend to graduate around, our graduation classes have been about 250 or so, so if we hold on to the 300 for the 12 or 13 years, again, we'll see, you know, growing enrollment, but that's one of the things we look at. I think we've done a better job promoting kindergarten registration, so we're getting a more accurate count earlier. But we also see expansions, again, Frances Wyman is very typical, you'll see, the kindergarten numbers always look very low right in the summer and then all of a sudden in September, we are adding 30, 30 new students. And then first grade tends to be a, a year of new students because many kindergarten students have spent the year in a private school setting. So a lot of parents are moving kids into first grade.
I was just going to ask that, if the first grade numbers are still, sometimes it's a surprise because you have your kindergarteners, but when others come in from the, the reason I ask the question is I, I just have. because you have your kindergarteners, but when others come in from the, the reason I ask the question is I just have a sense that even though it's not a huge influx of kids in a given year, I still have the sense that each year there's a few. And when you add up the few each year, pretty soon you got real numbers of increases. And I could be wrong, but I don't know.
After the redistricting we did, Pine Glen was about two hundred and eighty students or less. We're at three hundred and twenty-two right now, to give you an idea of how those numbers have grown.
So, I would thank you for your work on your budgets and for being careful about what you ask for. But I really, I want to know what you really need, even if we don't provide it, but I'd like to try.
Last but not least, Pine Glen.
We're pretty level from last year with the increase of one point four percent. And that was for consumables, for Envision, like Deb was saying. That's the price of those consumables last year to this year, how much they've gone up in cost. It's not by more of a program or any curriculum, it's sheerly the price of the consumables. When we talk about sections, we've had three sections at every grade level, with the exception of third grade, which is currently four, and fourth grade, which is currently two sections. And what we're asking for, if we had to prioritize, we'd really like a math specialist. I believe this is the fourth year I've asked the committee for a math specialist. It's a piece as we look at the standards of the curriculum and in particular the vocabulary with the math that we have in the standards. I'm always blown away walking into a kindergarten classroom, the vocabulary that's there. And having that math specialist to help with the curriculum, to help with the instruction, to provide interventions, to help us dig deeper into the assessments, would just be a critical piece for collaboration as well as sheer instruction for the students.
Mr. Nelson?
I can't really tell from looking up across the screen there, my eyes aren't as good as they used to be. You would like a math specialist, that's not in your number there?
No.
Okay, so with this little chart that we have here tonight, it's just kind of a wish list, right?
Well, this is just, you know, this is just, this is just. This is kind of the operating budget.
We got a list tonight from Nicole, it looks like new positions, but none of these positions are in any of those budgets.
Given the guideline, I think they were being realistic, not.
I understand, no, I fully understand that. I have a question, some people ask me, in terms of kids that are struggling in mathematics, would we be better off with more math tutors versus having a math specialist to work, you know, across the different grade levels? And what are your thoughts on that?
The thing with the math tutors is that we've in the past been able to hire really good math tutors. And they're under the RTI tutors. We hire such great people that they're incredibly marketable to other districts. A lot of, I think the past six classroom teacher hires we've had at Pine Glen have all been former RTI tutors, either at Pine Glen or within the district. But as jobs open up, those people move. So it's not necessarily a position that we could count on being there consistently year after year and to build those relationships and build the collaboration and the trust with the other staff and with the students. The other piece is, this would be really an area of specialty, being a math specialist. Whereas a tutor could be someone, you know, with a bachelor's degree, currently working on a master's. We're very fortunate, a lot of our tutors have master's degrees. But it would really be such an area of expertise and specialty that that's why we would look to that position over tutors.
I could just add to that for a second, also, the math specialist would help a lot with supporting the teachers in helping those struggling students, supporting the classroom teachers, and also co-teaching in classrooms, being able to work with small groups themselves. So it's a really multifaceted role.
Yeah, at Memorial and I think we.
They're integral in building capacity amongst the teachers. So they're helping the teachers to really become better experts, which a tutor wouldn't necessarily do. So we have highly qualified tutors, which we're very thankful for. But the math specialist provides a higher level of training for all teachers, which we're very appreciative of.
And as was said, Dave and I would just welcome the opportunity for equity between the four schools to have a math specialist at each one of the buildings.
Mr. Eiler, grab the microphone.
Don't call me names, John.
I don't even know how to respond to that. Actually, it was just something Mr. Nelson said, I just wanted to make sure I understood the format of the budget. My understanding is, the pages that Principal's been presenting here are talking about the non-salary budget. So it's correct that positions are not in the non-salary budget. But if you look later in the document, the, all the requested new positions are included in that budget total. So, so in terms of the budget, they are included currently, those new requested positions, did I get that right, Nicole?
Yes, this is just their expense side, the salaries, which are included in the total summary. And the list that I passed out tonight is all included in the budget overview. So that total number, this is just the expense side.
Are all of the positions being asked that we just talked about, are they all in the budget?
Yes, everything that's on that list that I handed out to you.
No, not that list.
No, they're not.
They're not? Okay, those are the positions that I would like a list of. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I would also like to address the issue of the positions that aren't listed here. When I ran for school committee, I believe was the first time that assistant principals for the elementary schools were proposed. And there was not money in the budget for them. Fortunately, Dr. Conti and his team were able to figure out a way to provide funding for two assistant principals for the, at that time, two largest schools in the district. As a former teacher, I had never been terribly enthused about adding more layers of administration. However, the size of the schools, that we now have three schools of this size, and because of the not-so-new anymore teacher evaluations, really do require more than is humanly possible. I just have to say it that way. And from what Mrs. Monaco said earlier, I mean, there's just not enough time to follow the extensive evaluations that are required by the state. But I also want to talk about the other piece of that, which is not the logistics. It's the fact that the purpose of a teacher evaluation is to improve teaching and to improve instruction and to make better, help our teachers become even better. I admire the teachers in this district, I think we have fabulous teachers. But as again, as a former teacher, there's always things that we can learn, that we can improve in. There's so many initiatives that got mentioned today that we can all increase our work in and how to help our students. And in order to do that, we need good administrators who can supervise their teachers. A friend of mine always reminds me that in the private sector, I believe that the number of individuals that a manager should manage is eight. And I think you said you have thirty-six this year, and you probably have a few more, and, you know. If we want good teachers, and again, the research shows that the most important thing for student achievement is having a good teacher. And we can do the best we can hiring good teachers and keeping good teachers, but we also can help teachers learn and grow. And we need good supervisors to do that, and we need supervisors who don't have thirty-six teachers to supervise. And that's only including the ones on the cycle that year, that's not including all the other staff that you folks supervise. And so I am very concerned, I'm really pleased that the current budget proposal has an additional assistant principal for the middle school. I think that's, given their size and their needs, I think that's crucial, I'm glad that's there. I don't know if we'll be able to do anything different this year for the elementary schools, but I just have to support what other people have said all night, is that it's very upsetting that we don't have money in the budget or haven't yet figured out a way to have money in the budget for appropriate levels of, and it's, you know, officially it's administrators and managers, but it's supervisors for our teachers and for our students. And that's not to downplay the need for guidance counselors and math specialists, and I could almost make another argument for all of those as well. But I just really wanted to support what everyone else here has said tonight and to support you folks that if there's some way we could get, not just to replace the assistant superintendent that we lost last year when we got this great new principal at, I mean, not assistant superintendent, the assistant principal that we lost at Memorial, that we got a great, sorry, anyway. But that we, I mean, Fox Hill's the same size, we need an assistant principal at Fox Hill as well. And it would be ideal to have one, you know, at all of our elementary schools because it would certainly be, but if, I don't, you know, I was hoping we'd see, you know, three assistant principals in the elementary schools next year. It's, you know, it's not my final decision on how to do that, or I don't have a solution financially. I mean, I know we have a lot of ideas, people who want that kind of financial resources. It's not to say that we don't have a lot of financial resources from the town, it's not one or the other. But I just worry a lot about how we can support our teachers and do teacher evaluations in an appropriate way that's helpful to the teachers, which means that all of our kids are going to learn more and do better in school. And all of our students can then be included, so I just had to say all that, so.
We agree.
Yeah, I think we do.
Well, that was great, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Madam Chair, just to want to thank Bob, he printed off, we gave you January and February enrollments. And then, again, Mrs. Creedon, you made the point at last night's meeting, and we put together sort of a We Are Burlington package for all the teachers at the start of the school year that gets into the numbers in terms of, you know, how many languages we have spoken, where the kids are from, how many were born outside the United States. It's sort of a great summary of, again, not only the numbers, but who's behind there. So I'll get that to you, because we have that done again for September. The numbers, Bob, you said were up six just from January to February, so also remember, just in elementary, so enrollment sort of fluctuates. We have a much more mobile adult population, we have a much more mobile adult population, kids come with adults, so that's sort of what happens. And when you see a lot of new building, new construction in town, we're getting kids all year round. The other thing, I know it's not a conversation for tonight, but just while we have everyone here and just sort of further something for you all to think about, we did a ten-year enrollment projection as part of our master plan. That ten-year enrollment projection, again, I will cut out that section and distribute to everyone, they're projecting a ten percent growth in Burlington over the next ten years. So roughly around three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty students, so that's what they're projecting over the next ten years. It's not just about adding staff, I know people want to continue to add staff and I appreciate that. We're running out of space in our buildings for the staff actually to reside, so we, again, roughly said we have about sixteen classrooms available at the elementary level, district-wide for us. Now, we might have fifteen in some grades and then seventeen in another, but if you sort of just want to think, we have about sixteen per grade. And I know we have some upcoming conversations about elementary configuration. So if we were just to keep Francis Wyman at five and Memorial at four, that's nine. We would need an elementary school that has seven homerooms a grade, just to maintain the number that we have now. If we were to then think about expanding for the future growth that we're seeing, we would need maybe nine classrooms a grade. So you're talking an elementary school about twice the size as Francis Wyman, if we were to do sort of three. So I'm just sort of giving that perspective, I'm not saying I'm for it or against it. But again, we have sixteen elementary classrooms now with no more room for classrooms, I don't think any of you are hiding classrooms anywhere. So even if our class sizes were to go up and we were to say, we could add a fifth section at Memorial, we don't have a classroom to add a fifth section at Memorial. So it's not just about personnel at this point, it's about, we're bumping into classes. And then I think this committee is committed to making sure that our specialists have classrooms, so we're not experiencing music or art without classrooms and things like that. So we're sort of, we're doing that as well. And so those are just a couple of things I wanted to say. I wanted to thank you guys for presenting budgets, you do a great job every year within, working within a guideline. And I know we have lots of conversations about it, and again, the needs of the students are certainly changing. The expectations are only getting higher. And I think we are trying to provide a high-quality foundation. And a lot of the accolades, as Mrs. Russo, as you said, that you hear about in high school, really start from a great foundation in preschool and elementary school. So again, I just think you all do a phenomenal job every day with the resources that are provided and your staffs obviously are fantastic. So I'll stop talking now.
Ms. Marcus?
Yeah, I'm concerned about the twenty percent decrease in the allotment per classroom. Does that mean that we're going to say that we're going to get twenty percent less in terms of what that teacher is able to bring into the classroom for teaching supplies that they, you know, build themselves? Because my biggest concern is this, I don't want to see us take it off the budget and then end up having to come out of teachers' pockets. And I think that to a great extent, we really are having a question here. We're either going to have to purchase twenty percent less to teach with or we're expecting teachers to come up with that money out of their own pocket.
Ms. Monaco?
I was wondering the same thing. So Nicole, do you, do you think that, I'm not sure of the percentage, but you had said you were asking for less money for teacher supplies?
I think it was more or less just aligning consistency, so across, making it more consistent across the board.
Do you figure it by student or by, how do you?
By teacher, classroom, by classroom teacher.
So not all the schools were at the same amount prior to this year? Okay.
They're all very close, and I think they all fluctuated, so.
Certainly a valid point that Ms. Marcus shared, but again, we, I think we provide our teachers with the ample supplies for them to do their, to do their teaching. Again, the, our value and I think our intention, Diana, Ms. Marcus, is to not have teachers spend their personal money to provide anything in those services, and I think that's a value of the committee. I think teachers do it anyway, I just think that's part of who teachers are, but I'm saying it's not our intention to design a budget that would require them to do so.
No, I didn't feel that that was your intention, that you said, let's knock it down twenty percent because we know teachers will open up their wallets as a target. But very often that is the result.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the Ways and Means, it's our first look at a department budget?
I want to thank Ms. Kasha, this, you know, compared to last year, you kept assuring us that this year we would see the two thousand and nineteen budget, so we can compare to the two thousand and twenty. And also seeing what's been encumbered to date too is helpful, having that all there. So, you know, I was glad to see that came to fruition and it's all set, so thank you with that too.
Any other comments or, alright, it's not.
And again, just before everyone leaves, just what keeps me up at night, and one of the many things that keeps me up at night is what's coming around. Bob, again, you just asked and these things appear. This is the ten-year projection that was done as part of our master plan work. So again, if you look at sort of where we are, we're a little bit ahead of where we are, where they were projecting. We're about a year ahead or so of where they're projecting, so if they, we'll continue to watch this.
Yeah, we're in twenty twenty-one already.
Again, some of those are out of district, so I just want to, you know, be fair with that, but we're probably about a year ahead of where we are. So we're just watching this. just watching this closely, but we're not, the people who study this stuff aren't projecting that we're going to have declining enrollment, so at least I would say that. So, and I know it's not just numbers, it's who's in those numbers as well that we have to address, and I'll share more information about that. But we are looking at enrollment because that is a, that's a very, that's a driver of costs for us. And again, I'm going to say something, and I hope Mr. Murphy will support it, but I think at some point, when there were factors that drove our expenses that were sort of beyond our control, enrollment was sort of one of those factors. We did have some of those discussions about having those positions be outside of guidelines so we can maintain programming. And I think the, we had that discussion even this year regarding the transportation budget. So, again, I think it's a, I just wanted to say thank you for that conversation because there are some costs that are just beyond our, beyond our control. And I think we'll highlight those for you in, in the future. And again, just appreciate having that flexibility. But we are looking at an environment that we believe we're going to have more kids.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate all your time tonight and being out here. So. All right, where are we? So, now we'll back up to new business handling of cash policy, DBJ dash one for first reading. And you should have a hard copy, oh, no, from last week. It was last week. Okay, so they should be inside.
And Madam Chair, I'm sorry, is this the first reading? Or is this not last, last, this is the first reading here?
This is the first.
Okay, so again, the draft of the handling of cash policy, DBJ dash one, is being, is submitted to the committee. Again, it's first reading, the committee should take this under advisement and vote on it at the next meeting. Again, I want to thank Nicole for putting this together.
Oh, can we just have that up for a second? Sorry, thank you.
Whoa, sorry?
Just if we can have it up for the home viewing audience.
We can, we can do that, so.
And you, you all have, okay, thank you, sorry.
Does the committee or Ways and Means have any questions? Certainly, we can entertain any feedback. I think you've seen this before.
Mr. Eiler?
In a rare moment, I just wanted to say I have absolutely no comments.
Well, if we can vote for approval, we are, you feeling okay? No.
All right.
Thank you. All right, so this is a first reading, and we will look to have it on our next agenda for a vote. Thank you. All right, next we have superintendent's mid-year goals progress.
Okay, I got it. Too many papers on my desk, here we go. Pass it. Again, the format of the new evaluation system you've all experienced now for about three or four years requires a sort of a mid-year update. My sort of mid-year update, again, is based on the outstanding performance of others. I really don't do very much at all. And so, I think you'll see, I have a professional practice and a student learning goal, and then some school improvement goals is the format. The Planning for Success language that the elementary principals used, if you look on the progress report, the first page is a signature page. If you just look on the back, I know this isn't dense wording, but I think by the time you hear the three school improvement plans, you'll get fairly familiar with the format. So, again, my focus areas are going to be the same as the schools' focus areas. That's the whole point of the alignment of the Planning for Success process. So, you'll see that, again, we're focusing on relationships and engaged learning. Those are district strategic initiatives, student safety, and then district operations would be, again, part of our areas of focus. Communication, collaboration, cultural competence. I think there's progress being made in all of those areas. Again, largely that progress is being made at the school level with, with staff and faculty. Again, I'm certainly not claiming to do that, but the district website is sort of a big initiative that we under, was undertaken in terms of the communication, one aspect of it. I think the person, the interpersonal communication is also something we've really tried to focus on, and I hope you see as evidence of effective communication just the partnership between the four elementary principals. That's not by accident, and it's certainly something that we work on and we encourage. So, when we talk about hiring or talk about skills, we really look for people who have great collaboration skills and are willing to work together as part of a team. And I think, hopefully, you saw evidence of that, and they're just a great group. And when all six principals get together, or I include Deb Clark in that too, it's, it's actually a very funny, dynamic crowd. So, it's, they do find humor in, in their work. Cultural competence is something that can go from the concrete. I think in our calendar that you've adopted this year, I think would be sort of a very small, concrete example of where we're trying to recognize and, and allow for more cultures to feel a part of what it is we do. I think the, the more important part of cultural competence is actually to build that into our instruction and our teaching, so to make sure that all of our staff recognize that our community is growing in diversity. I say this, or I've said it maybe too often, is, is town meeting is not reflective of the populations that we have in our schools. I'm not judging, I'm just saying this, our schools look different than, than town meeting. And making sure that our instruction is culturally relevant, that we are valuing sort of all of our students' cultures and background is, is an important piece. And, and our teachers do a fantastic job at that, but they need time. They need time to sort of change their curriculum, update their curriculum, and make those adjustments. And it's not just, what's funny is it's not just our teachers, sometimes the, a lot of the state and the policies that we're having to respond to aren't very culturally sensitive either, so we're having to make those adjustments. Patrick, it reminds me the conversation, didn't the state come out with new standards, world history standards? And they had some sections on India, and we had some students from, we have a very, again, robust, wonderful Indian-American population in Burlington, and they came in and were just saying this is all wrong. And so, it was, it was interesting that even sort of the, the, sort of the state curriculum that we're supposed to follow was not very sensitive or culturally competent in, in terms of our students' experience, which I, again, I think it's great that they came in and complained, so that's a, that's a good thing. Engaged learning, it's kind of jargony, but I would just like you to contrast that with compliant learning. We have a lot of students, our students are very, sort of, tend to be very well-behaved, and, and certainly you're looking for compliance. When you have 1,000 teenagers under one roof, you need a certain level of compliance. But I think what we're really striving for is students to engage in their own learning, to really be excited about what they're doing. Some of the terms they're throwing around now, they want, we want the learning to be more personalized. Again, Diane has done a tremendous amount of work on behalf of the district, working with a consortium, a group called Maple, which is a Massachusetts personalized learning, ed tech group, and it's really about, we have the tools now where we can really personalize learning. Certainly, again, there are certain skills that all kids need to learn. We're, we're not going to say, okay, you can decide to read or not decide to read. So, I'm saying, we're not thinking about young kids, but when the kids get to be in high school, we really want them to have choice, we really want them to be excited about it, because more than likely, what we're hearing is students will not be in the same career, like maybe many of us were, for long periods of time. They tend to change jobs fairly frequently. And also, a lot of what they're saying in terms of the futurists that we listen to when we go to the conversations and, you know, when we go to some of the companies around us, you know, the incoming class, kindergarten class this year was a class of 2032, so just to scare you all a little bit. What they're saying by 2030, about 50% of the jobs that are going to be available aren't even jobs right now, they're not even evolved yet. So, what they're saying is, there are going to be, always be certain jobs where we need to have job training and skill training for, but the more important skill is love of learning because you're going to have to learn new jobs as you go, and you're not going to be able to learn one skill and have that skill carry you for 30 years anymore. So, I just think that engagement is always something that we're trying to make a part of our curriculum. Social-emotional learning is, again, a term that's really become overutilized in the last four or five years. The way I think about social-emotional learning is, in Massachusetts, the last 25 years has really been focused on content standards and testing towards those content standards. And we've done actually a very good job of, of doing that. We haven't done it for all kids. Massachusetts has actually very large achievement gaps between students of color and students who have socioeconomic challenges. But in terms of our overall state averages, we lead the nation in terms of our standardized test performance, which is great, and it's due to the efforts of principals and teachers who, who you've seen today. The issue is, those aren't the skills that companies are looking for, that kids need to demonstrate in college. So, they're looking for skills like collaboration skills, they're looking for skills, kids being able to apply knowledge to new, new problems, not just regurgitate old knowledge, because they can do that using technology pretty easily now. And we don't test and assess for those skills. And a lot of the studies I'm reading that Patrick shares with me too, when they look at skills that are correlated to future success, and we can all define success differently, but I would just contend success is a good thing, not a bad thing. So, for the skills that are correlated to good things happening in the future are more related to soft skills, are more related to social-emotional learning than they are to content knowledge in today's world. So, certainly kids need to have content knowledge, I'm not discounting all content knowledge, but the reason that we're focusing on social-emotional learning so much is because it's, it's really becoming a critical skill for kids to continue to learn and for them to be collaborative, and it's really being more highly correlated to future choices and future success. So, what does that mean? Is that we have social-emotional curriculum. We can't just assume that's an innate skill anymore. One issue with diversity is that not every child is brought up sort of in the same way, and, and we can't make assumptions about families. And so, the idea that we're screening for social-emotional achievement and that we're looking for it, and we're probably going to start looking at measures of school climate culture, measure things like student joy, because joy's a part of learning, and they have tools out there for us to look at that. So, again, I know we will always have some state, state testing that we have to do. We're really petitioning that we want more flexibility, and I think one of the things we need to be careful of, and I think I thank this committee, is we, we don't place, I think we look at state testing results, but it's not something that we live or die with because honestly, it's becoming, we, it's sort of paying the toll, but it's, it's less important to student choices and options as we move forward. So, and, so I think that pendulum for content knowledge only is, is coming back now, and we're looking more, again, at the whole child, and that's really what social-emotional learning is about. But it's not fluffy, it's not something that's extra, it is really something that is a critical skill for kids to have and to learn. And we, we're spending up just a lot of time on it. And I would just say that inclusion is something, again, you all saw the, many of you visited the Pine Glen program, inclusion, it means that kids who are normally taught in isolation are now taught in a least restrictive environment, schools and classrooms, and all kids benefit from that, not just the students who are being included, but the, you want to talk about ways of getting to students' social-emotional growth, empathy is to have them learn alongside students who are included. So, again, I just want to piggyback, and I really could have let the elementary principals do a much better job of presenting this. Targeted instruction is something we spend a tremendous amount of time on as well, and that, we should probably even get into this with the committee sometime, except that it just takes a long time for us to get to. We know our kids extremely well. We have, and Patrick, again, does a phenomenal job in, with his, his staff and department. We have, just at the elementary level, since we're at an elementary conversation tonight, we have three data team meetings every year, typically fall, winter, and spring. We're looking at measures of literacy attainment, we're looking at mathematical skill attainment, and we're looking at social-emotional growth and attainment. So, and the reason for doing that is because there are certain skills that we are saying our curriculum needs to develop in those kids, and we don't want any kids falling through the cracks. So, what I'm saying is, we know our kids, we know our kids by name, we know who's on grade level, we know who's above grade level, we know who's behind grade level. And the key is, when we see kids not at grade level, is targeting our interventions, targeting our support to those particular, for those particular needs. And that's one of, again, we get none of that information from the state tests, so I'm saying, I know we have to do it, but we are doing a much better job internally with that, and it's, it's, I think sometimes people mistake elementary instruction as being sort of fun with kids, and it is fun with kids, and it should be joyful, but they are very talented professionals, and they're very targeted with, with the work that they, with the work they do. The content may be simple for some adults, but the teaching is incredibly complex, and I know you all realize that. Again, PBIS is something that's connected to social-emotional learning. What that means is, a lot of school-wide positive behavior supports, we're trying to get away from sort of punishments, and I'm not saying that we sort of still don't have to do some of that, but it's really about enforcing positive, positive behaviors. And adults tend to segregate themselves more than kids, even though they will never acknowledge it. Our kids don't, and our kids have to learn how to navigate those very diverse communities in, that occur in schools, and they do a much better job than adults do. And again, that positive behavioral systems are really to say that we're a community when we're learning together. So, again, like I said, I'm sure you've all had hosted birthday parties in your, in your histories. It's hard to manage 10, 20 kids, but imagine having three or four or 500 under one roof. So, again, there needs to be rules, but I think they need to be sort of focusing on positive behaviors instead of negative behaviors. And again, I can't take credit for any of this, we have just great people. Really proud of the memorandum of understanding with the Burlington Police Department. Again, Burlington sort of was a part of the leader in that conversation with the Attorney General. And again, Chief Kent is just someone I really rely on, and the school resource officers are, are very helpful. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey, again, we're doing that again. I want to thank Leahy Clinic for sponsoring that. We're doing, we have more of the Middle Sex League districts, so I think we're going to have 11 of the 12 communities now participating. That's happening, I think in the next couple of weeks, we're going to do the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. That's our bi-annual survey of 7th through 12th graders. And then, because it's online now, we'll get a much, we'll get the results much more quickly to you, and then we'll have a league sample as a comparison along with a state sample. So, we would only get a state sample before, and the urban centers always sort of threw off some of our comparisons. So, now, again, Leahy is sponsoring the survey across the 12 Middle Sex League communities, so we have, again, a local sample and then a league sample that we feel is much more helpful for us for comparison. And if any of our neighboring communities are having real success with the program, then we can try to emulate that and do some professional development. In the off-years, we're going to be exploring doing a school culture survey. That would include parents, teachers, students, and I think it's just something we need to look at moving forward. So, again, I think this, every, every couple of years for us to take a look at what we're doing, and there's some great new tools out there that we're, that we're seeing. And then, we're hoping in the future, if we have some flexibility in terms of measurements of school quality in addition to MCAS, or in, hopefully, at some point in, you know, in addition to MCAS, or maybe in lieu of MCAS, that we would have those measurements in place. And I just think that information would be valuable to the committee to see, because oftentimes, the reward for a job well done in education is silence. And so, I think we have to actively solicit feedback, because people are busy, and I think we need to allow that to, allow that to happen. So, again, we have a lot going on, it's organized through this Planning for Success process. We're going to be revisiting the Planning for Success process moving forward, an area I'd really like to see, and there's going to be some budgetary conversations about it, is an expansion of computer. about it, is an expansion of computer science instruction at all levels, elementary, middle and high school. I think it's a new literacy that our kids need to learn. And I think in order to be just a functioning citizen in today's day and age, they not only have to be able to use computers, but I think they have to understand how computers work, because it's going to be impacting all of their lives moving forward. So you'll see that as we move forward. And the hard part is just fitting it in, because we have such a robust curriculum, you know, how do we fit it in? The day's not going to get any longer. Teachers need to learn new skills, but I think they're certainly willing to do that. So I could go on for hours. Again, I'm so proud of the work that our principals and our teachers are doing, our central office staff is doing. District operations, again, we live it every day, but I just can't reiterate, we basically have redesigned the whole noneducational part of the district with operations and with the, in the business office and the new policies and procedures that have taken place. I swear, there's been four years' worth of work done in four months, and I think it's really due to certainly Nicole's efforts in the business office. And again, I don't, not meaning to take credit for that, I'm just acknowledging that there's just been incredible progress made on the, on the non-learning side. So thank you very much for taking that on. And again, I think she's been fully staffed for five days now, so we're grateful, not even five days, so four days. So we're grateful that we're fully staffed up, but, and again, mentioning operations last doesn't mean it's important, but I just think it's not as important. It is as important, but I just think we've just made tremendous progress and gone through a lot of changes in the last year, and you've all lived through that. So, thank you. And we're going to continue to focus on these areas. It's not work that ever gets completed in a year, and I think we just need to, we'll continue to try to organize our efforts under major headings. And we're a people-driven organization, so we'll never automate teaching completely. Relationships are critical, and making sure that we attract, retain and train the best is something that's really critical for us to continue to have the performances that we have and the student experiences that you all see, and I hope that you've come to appreciate. So the work of others is tremendous. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And also, we'd like to acknowledge that you were named the Mass Superintendent of the Year, the first one for the Middle Sex League, I heard also. But no, it's quite an achievement, quite an honor, so.
Again, any acknowledgement of superintendents is the result of work of others, so that's the, we have great people here and a great team, and I get to take credit for their efforts, so that's good. Good for me.
Next on the agenda, we have the submission of statement. Oh, I'm sorry, no one was like, Mrs. Monaco.
All right.
They're fighting over.
Yes, we're fighting over who goes first. So Dr. Conti, I also would like to extend my congratulations on you being chosen as Massachusetts Superintendent of the Year. We're very proud of you. Now I have some other comments. So one thing that John Lyons said one time, and I'm sure I've mentioned it before, is that Burlington is very up and coming relative to, we have research-based education instruction. And I think that's, I think it's an important reason in why we're successful. We have a very culturally diverse and demographically diverse community, and yet we've had great success. And I think it's because of the leadership academically that we have enjoyed. We have a great staff. And so I just wanted to bring that up as sort of, I see these, these goals being met as we go in that respect, at least. I would like to also comment that we've, we've come a long way with special ed programs. I think we've got some great ones going right now. But I would, I would also say that we have miles to go in that respect. We need more special ed programs. I think at the high school, we need some, not so much separate programs, but initiatives on how to make all students feel comfortable regardless of their needs. And I think Mary Hood is probably looking at that. She was a great hire, by the way. And this is, this is kind of out of the blue. I'm not, it's, I'm bringing it up because of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. My understanding from students in the high school at the moment, current high school students, is that there's really a big vaping problem. And it's to the extent that I had two kids who don't even know each other tell me in the same weekend that they won't use the bathrooms, they wait all day till they get home, because if they happen to be in the bathroom the same time that someone's vaping and gets caught, everybody in the bathroom gets in trouble. So they're afraid to use the bathrooms. So just relative to the Youth Risk Behavior Survey and the police department and that aspect, I wonder if maybe we could have a discussion in the future about this particular issue? And one of the reasons I find it so disturbing is, they have these things that they vape from and they look like thumb drives, and they don't show, and so nobody knows they're doing it, because there's no smoke, right? And from what I'm told, and I'm no expert, but from what I'm told, if you have like a pod or whatever you call it, that's in this thing that you vape out of, each one of those has the amount of nicotine in it, assuming that they're vaping nicotine as opposed to something else. Each pod, I'm told, is the equivalent of a pack of cigarettes. And they're going through maybe three in a day, some kids, which is like the equivalent of three packages of cigarettes in a day, which may be safer than actually smoking them. But on the other hand, we've got these huge nicotine addictions being built. And it isn't, you know, it's not necessarily the school's problem directly, it's more of a parent issue. But I do think the school has some responsibility. So I just would like to have a more generalized discussion about, I understand it's a nightmare for administrators to, to try and control it at the high school level or even the middle school level. So I'd just like to have a discussion sometime.
When Mr. Sullivan comes in, we can have him, he has an office full of.
Vaping products that he's taking away from kids.
Show you sort of what they are. It is a, it's a new challenge, and nicotine is a, is a very, it's a very challenging addiction.
Oh, it sure is.
I think, so I just think that's, even if it doesn't share all the dangers as smoking, it's still an addiction and it's still problematic. So we can certainly look at that and spend some time on that. And again, we should have the results from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey relatively quickly as well.
Are there questions on that about vaping?
Yes.
Yep, it's been updated prior.
Thanks. Good job on that award.
Mr. Nelson, yes.
Well, Mrs. Monaco covered most of what I was concerned about.
You were upset about the vaping, too?
I was not going to bring up vaping, no, I didn't. That wasn't on my list. But I also want to congratulate you, Eric, on your award. I think it's well deserved. I think when you're recognized by your peers, that says a lot. And I know you'd like to deflect a lot of the praise that you get, but it's, I think it's well deserved. I've been on the committee a long time, like most of us, and, you know, leadership is a quality that isn't always easy to find. And I think that you've done a great job as the leader of the system over the last, is it eleven years now, ten? Eleven years, over the last eleven years. And, you know, I just look forward to your continuing on in this position. I think you are on target, on target with your goals. I think one of the things that we, we were hopeful we would see over the last several months is improvement with, you know, the budget controls, and we're seeing a lot of improvement in that area. In addition to some of the other goals that are on the report, in terms of financial management, I think we've seen a lot. And I think Ways and Means is probably appreciative of a lot of the policies and procedures we put in place to address what happened in last year with our budget issues, and I think we're on the right track in every area. So I'd just say, keep up the good work, and you are on target. Thank you.
Ms. Simon?
I don't want to repeat what everyone else said, except I do want to congratulate you on your award. And I also just want to re-comment that, I mean, these goals are the ones that you've put forward, that we've agreed are important. I think they're all really important goals, and I do see that we're making progress and that there's effort being put into this at your level, but across the district, you know, with your leadership, and people see you committed to it. And I think that that's, that's where we want to be, and that's where we want to be going. So I think we're in good shape with this. And in terms of the financial goals, certainly, I mean, obviously, Ms. Kasha has an awful lot to do with it, the work that went into it, but it was the biggest area of concern at the end of last year, and I see, I see that you've jumped in and, you know, taken the bull by the horn and addressed those issues. So those are important to me, too.
Mr. Murphy?
Ditto.
Yes. No, I, I, you know, obviously, I agree. I, you know, I would agree you're on target with all of your goals, and I agree with your progress report, and I think it was accurate. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, we're lucky to have you.
Ditto.
All those rare occasions when Eric does that a loss for one.
Oh, was he splashing?
All right. We have submission of statement of interest for discussion and possible improvement. So before us, we have the Burlington High School for the April Statement of Interest with the understanding, moving forward, that we need to have a larger, more global discussion with regard to the elementary school and in what way we would like to proceed. So not sure if Dr. Conti, if you'll start shaping that through our discussions, if the board's comfortable with the, with what's before us.
Again, I honestly just, not sure what was discussed last meeting, I just wanted to be clear. So Terry's scheduling a bunch of meetings, so I think the meetings are to sort of look to the future. But for April, because that's our deadline, right, we are going to submit a high school renovation project for this April. And again, we're, we're going to call MSBA, get some feedback, we're going to put the best package we can together. Just remember, MSBA has no memory, so that we've applied seven times before, does not matter. You get no points, so it's going to start the whole process again. But again, concurrently, we're going to start conversations about sort of where we, where we go from here, and talk to the town, and figure out what happens next. Because like I said, if we're going to reconfigure at the elementary level, then we have some significant conversations to have, and then more than likely, our submission for the following April, a year from this April, may be different than this year. But I just want to say, for this April, we're going to be submitting the high school renovation project.
I believe so. Mr. Murphy?
That's exactly what I was going to say. I just want to, I think that was the summary of what we talked about last time, and I think there was a certain sentiment that perhaps it's time to shift our focus, but I think we all, at least I was in agreement that there's just not enough time to flesh out the alternative between now and submission time. So it doesn't make sense not to submit anything, so I think we submit the high school one again and keep our fingers crossed. But in the meantime, we have to have some serious and immediate discussions about options, paying for things without the state's assistance, things along those lines, and I think we have to start moving forward with those discussions. If we're going to do a committee or something, that's fine, but I think we have to move forward.
Ms. Simon?
Yeah, I also, I mean, I'm disappointed that we are going to be submitting the same thing again, that the state doesn't seem to prioritize. But I was convinced by our conversation last week that we do need more time to really flesh out what our options are for the elementary proposals. There's, you know, some big differences between the ways we could proceed, and I want to make sure we have time to talk about that, that we flesh those out, as you said, and that we get the input from all the community, from parents, from town meeting, from wherever, about what would be the best way to go forward, and make sure that that is ready for next year to be put in, as well as to look at other options for the high school going forward if we don't get approved by the state MSBA.
Mr. Nelson?
Madam Chairman, since we're talking about it, we might as well put a motion on the floor, and I think the statute requires that we read into the record this language. If you want me to read it, and I'm happy to do it.
Please do.
Not that I'm thrilled with it, but anyway. Madam Chairman, I move that the committee adopt the following resolution relative to the Burlington High School. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February 26, 2019, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the School Committee of Burlington, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated April 3, 2019, for the Burlington High School located at 123 Cambridge Street, Burlington, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority number three, prevention of the loss of accreditation. Priority number five, replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in the school facility. And priority number seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. A specific project will update classrooms and replace science labs to be a more effective learning environment, replace aged and, edged-out heating and ventilation slash cooling equipment that is original construction, 1971. Replace interior building components, lockers, lighting, fire alarm, et cetera, and provide updated security improvements which will extend the life of the existing facility, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Mass School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Mass School Building Authority, or commits the city slash town slash regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Mass School Building Authority.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Discussion. Ms. Monaco?
Yeah, so my comments are more general. Are we at the point where I can talk about everything, or just that motion?
What do you mean by everything?
Well, where we're going with this. All right, well, stop me if you don't like it. So I think, I think, yeah, good luck, right? I think the harder we try to conserve, whether it be the conversation we had before, whether we, whether it's, you know, oh, we can't possibly do a project without the state funding it, I think the harder we try, and we have regularly, diligently for years, the further behind we're getting. I mean, I think just tonight, we've seen the staffing issues, and now we're seeing the building issues. I am totally in favor of putting this forward. I don't have high hopes. We are working, Sharon and Terry have been working on the initial meeting to talk about funding the high school, assuming we fail again, funding it maybe in phases without SBA. SBA funding. And I think that's what we need to do. We need to get this going. The high school's the next thing in our master plan, we need to do it. And just quickly on the elementary thing, I, I just want to point out that in the discussion tonight, when we looked at enrollments, I think it's pretty clear to me, at least, that we can't do with three elementary schools, we need four. And if we're thinking ahead, we need to figure out how to have four elementary schools. I know it's one at a time, and I'm not sure the order or any of that, but I just think based on the numbers we're looking at, we are dreaming if we, I mean, I think Memorial's huge. I think Francis Wyman is huge. I like little schools. But if you, if you want a school twice the size of Memorial or Francis Wyman, that's nuts. That isn't what we want. That isn't Burlington. So I think we need to pretend we're back in the 60s when all these new schools were built, like the one Eric would like to take a bulldozer to, which is known as Fox Hill, and, and Wildwood was built back then, too. And I think we need to step up and say, this is what we need for the future of education in Burlington. So that's just my two cents worth, and I am very much in favor of trying this again, but without a lot of hope.
All right. Seeing no other, oh, sorry. Mr. Murphy?
You want to argue with me?
No, actually, you, you made a good point that I wanted to reinforce.
Ah, sweet.
If you want to save the tape for this meeting, feel free.
Tom agrees with me.
But if people look back what this town did from about 1959, when Meadowbrook School was built, I believe, 58, through 1969, when the Francis Wyman School was built, that's a 10-year period, and they built the, the Wildwood School, the Fox Hill, Pine Glen, Francis Wyman. Memorial came in at about 54, 55, so that was a little bit beforehand. That's a lot of building in, in a 10-year period, and I'm sure whether the, I know there wasn't an MSBA at that time, whether there was a similar program for state assistance, I, I don't know. But clearly, you know, the residents of the town of Burlington stepped up at that time and said, you know, this needs to get done, let's find a way to do it. And, you know, we're approaching something like that right here. We've got two elementary schools, the Fox Hill and Pine Glen, that are both 50-plus years old. They're both outdated, they're both full, and we got a high school that's over 40 years old, that's got a lot of the original equipment in it. And we've had a pretty nice run from a taxpayer standpoint, from, since the Francis Wyman School was built in 1969, until the new Memorial School was built a few years ago, you know, we had a pretty good run, in terms of not having to build new buildings. But time catches up with everything and everybody, and, and it's time that we have to step up. And I like to think that the town's people will agree and be willing to, to do what needs to be done to get it done, but I think it's up to us to start putting the idea forward and pushing hard for it, because we just can't wait too much longer. It's crazy. Take, even once you get the green light on one of these things, it's still three or four years before it's, it's, it's a building that is usable.
At least.
And we just can't, we just can't wait too much longer. So that's all I have to say.
Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I think, I agree with Tom and Chris. I think that in an ideal world, we could get the funding over the course of the next several years to replace both elementary schools, but part of me says the best plan is the one that we can get approved by the town. And if, if after we have these meetings and it's, they start to crystallize, and there's a, there's a general opinion out there that maybe we're better off replacing the two elementary schools with one, and the town's going to fund that, maybe that's an approach we have to keep an open mind to. I'm not saying it's the best approach, but I don't see the, the SBA agreeing to fund two elementary schools for the town of Burlington in the next 10 years. I just, I don't see that as a possibility. So if we were to knock down Fox Hill and put up a new school there, and then think we're going to replace Pine Glen a couple of years later, I don't see the state approving it unless we get really lucky. And I'm not a big fan of, of an elementary school with 800 people in it, but I know there's a lot of towns that are doing all kinds of things. I mean, Billerica's got eight to 12 now in the, in the high school, and so, you know, they're, I don't know if they're doing separate fifth grades. I think Eric talked about that at one point, maybe having a Pine Glen, just have a fifth grade in the Pine Glen and explore those things. So there's a lot of different options. I just think we have to keep an open mind and not, at this point, foreclose anything. Just get as much input as we can over the course of the next several months and see what we, what we think is best after we consider all the options. And the other thing that we talked about a couple of weeks ago was, and Chris mentioned this, is in terms of the high school, really moving forward with a plan to get this high school completely renovated. It needs it, and we might be able to fit it in under our bonding schedule. Your folks can help us with that on Ways and Means, but we can't just keep hoping that the state's going to approve it. There's just too many other communities that are way ahead of us in the pecking order. And unfortunately, the way the, the law's written for the approval, they, they, they should have two different priority lists, and they've only got one. And if they had a priority list for people like us who maintain our buildings and need money to renovate, we'd probably be at the top of the list. But unfortunately, they haven't done that. I had some conversations, but they haven't gone very far with the state. But anyway, those are my comments, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, we'll bring it to the vote. All those in favor of the SOI submission?
Aye.
Aye.
All those abstained, opposed, zero, passes 5-0-0. All right. Is there, so do we have the next step with regard to setting up the meetings, and then with regard to elementary conversations?
Yeah, we're working on the schedule.
Okay. Okay. Great. All right. Anything else under new business? All right. Anybody for public participation that we didn't speak to agenda? No. All right. Seeing none. We do have a need for executive session to discuss approval of January 8, January 22, and 2012, all of 2019 executive minutes. Also, for the purpose, MGL 30A, Section 21A, subsection 7, for the purpose of complying with any general or special law, specifically GLC 214, 214, Section 1B, right to privacy in GLC, 12A, Section 910. Also, for potential litigation, doing, holding this in open session would have detrimental effect on the position of the public body. We will return for public session for a purpose of enjoyment. Getting tired, I'm sorry.
Motion to go on executive session.
Second. All right. Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson? And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.